The May 13th, 2025 meeting of the Anarundel County Board of Health is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. And my apologies for the late start. My commute took twice as long as it normally does this morning. So everything was a bit slow getting in. And Dr. Toni Gednar, Health Officer, I will let you take it away. Good morning.
A disclaimer, I am suffering with a dry cough. My colleagues are aware I'm not contagious, but if at any point it gets a little too much, I may, let me turn this on, I may hand it off to one of my colleagues if it gets a bit heavy. But we are going to get started and I will try to move swiftly. With me at the table this morning, I have Dr. Tope Bada, who is the Deputy Health Officer for Public Health, and Mrs. Sean Kane, who is the Deputy Health Officer for Operations. And in the audience with me are Director of Communications, Megan Pringle; Director of Behavioral Health, Sandy O'Neil; Director of Disease Prevention and Management, Jennifer Snyder; Director of Environmental Health, Don Kurdiem; Director of Family Health Services, Peggy Cruz; Director of School Health Services, Karen Siska Creo; and our Acting Director of Finance, Courtney Scott; and our Director of the Office of Assessment and Planning, Donna Perkins. I'd really like to thank them for all of their hard work, as well as many other staff members at the Health Department, the Communications Team, our EpiStaff. There's a lot of work that goes into putting this presentation together. It's far from just me. I do the final sign-offs and I'd like this changed and that tweaked, but all of these individuals work really, really hard to make sure that this presentation comes together. But more importantly, all of the work that you're seeing represented in the presentation are the things that they are doing every day. I'd also like to acknowledge our partners with the Mental Health Agency. Adrian Meckler and her team are here with us as well. Okay, so just a really quick overview of the Department of Health. Our operating budget is roughly $93 million, budgeted at 945 positions and over 800 positions filled within the department. And here are some of the locations. You can find us throughout the county as well as our mobile services. Okay, so I'm actually going to start with a question. We didn't receive a lot of questions from council, I appreciate that. But we did get an important one from more than one of you, which is what do we expect the federal changes impact to be on the Department of Health? And that's a really, really broad answer that I could do the whole presentation on, but I thought it was probably most important to highlight our funding sources. So you understand, at least from a fiscal standpoint, what we, how we are funded and what level of federal funding we receive. And so this slide really gives you a sense of what proportion of our budget is general funds, as well as things like the opioid abatement funds. But then looking at the breakdown of the funding that we get from the state, right? There's a couple of different ways that that happens. We don't receive at this moment any federal dollars directly from the federal government. All of our federal dollars are passed through grants from the state. And so you see that at about $15 million of our budget is passed through from the state to us. So as we see things being cut, and we have had some cuts to some grants, not our longstanding ones, but more COVID-era grants that we were still using, right? That we're still supporting work within the department and things that were not just COVID. I think it was a bit, when you say it's COVID-era and COVID is over, some of it is supporting things that have happened and infrastructures that have been put in place as a result of. And so we saw some of those cuts, most of which the department was able to manage and we've moved forward, and that was relatively minimal probably about two months ago. But wanted to give you an understanding of our grant funding. And we really don't know, right? It really depends on what's cut and to what extent. I will say that a large proportion of our federal grant funding does support our behavioral health work, right? They are the largest proportion of that number. So when you're thinking about harm reduction and overdose prevention, I think those are the programs probably most at risk if there are large federal cuts, but they're not the only programs at risk, right? There are a number of other areas in the department, Ryan White funding for HIV, even looking into the schools and funding that's provided for children who need one-on-one services. So if you have a nurse that's with you all day, how is that being funded? So there's just a really long list of potential impacts, but wanted you to have at least an understanding of that grant funding because I think that's the thing that's probably easiest and quickest than what we've seen happening, at least thus far. So if you have any other questions or if there's something specific you'd like to ask, happy to answer, but for us, it is a bit of wait and see what will happen. All right, so we're going to jump right in and talk about measles a little bit this morning. I'm sure most of you have seen in the news that we have seen this year, numbers in measles that the United States has not seen in quite some time. And why is this concerning? For a few different reasons. So in 2000, the United States declared measles eliminated. Now, that doesn't mean that there weren't measles cases, but you'll see on the next slide that the vast majority of those cases, there were very few, and this year we've seen hundreds of cases, which is new and different. Just a little bit on why that's important. It's highly contagious. The virus can stay in the air for hours after the person may have left the particular space. So it doesn't necessarily require that close contact with that individual, making things like contact tracing a bit more challenging. But also are really effective vaccines. So if you have those two doses of MMR, which is measles, lumps, and rubella in early childhood, it's really effective. And so looking at this slide, wanted to make sure you had context for what we've seen over the last five years, right? From 2021 through 2024, and looking at 935 cases so far in 2025, which far outpaces even the last five years collectively, if you added them all together. So just a few other things to think about when we're going through this is what are the vaccination rates of school-aged children in Anarundel County? Making sure that we are aware of the vaccine rates and if there's any particular schools and/or communications that we need to send out. This is something we have been communicating to the public, things that we've been talking to the school system about. There have been three cases in Maryland, all have been related to travel. But it's something that we continue to watch. And then looking specifically at our kindergarten students to make sure that we're maintaining that 95% vaccination rate to hopefully prevent outbreaks. But I want to thank the teams who really work on combing through that data down to the point where they can tell me, hey, here's the two schools that are on the cusp, right? Like that sort of information we have to better understand if we need to put resources out there. Here's where we should start. Here's why, what age group of children we're looking at, all of the above. So I really appreciate the level of detail and attention that's been paid to this to make sure we're prepared and working with our hospital partners to make sure that we have a response and we have a, an operating procedure if there are to be cases in the county, how will we respond? And so that work is ongoing. Also wanted to talk to you a bit about bird flu. This is one where we have had three backyard flocks in the county. Fortunately, at this time, we're still only seeing most of the transmission from animal to animal or from animal to human, no human-to-human transmission. And that is the thing that we're most looking out for and trying to make sure that this doesn't change into a slightly different variation of the virus. So what happens when we have the backyard flocks? It's primarily the Maryland Department of Agriculture that's going out, talking to those. They're the first individuals to know. They then alert the Maryland Department of Health, who will call us and say, hey, there's a flock in your county. And our role is really to reach out to the owners, to understand their level of exposure, whether or not they've had a flu vaccine, whether or not they're interested in receiving Tamiflu, if they have, for instance, cats that are out in the yard, but also in their home, moving back and forth. Those sort of questions are things that we are looking into. And so it really is a partnership across those agencies to make sure that we've appropriately responded. And for the three cases that we've had in Anarundel County so far, they do have to go in and depopulate those flocks, which is euthanize the birds. The term is depopulate, but that's what essentially happens once you start to see it happening in a flock. So for us, it's to make sure people understand what they're looking at. If you're starting to see your birds have symptoms, reporting that to the Department of Agriculture so that things can actually start rolling and that you can end the exposure to others. But we will continue to take a look at this and make sure that we're educating folks, but wanted you to have a sense of what we've seen and when we've seen them. And for us, the state does count, even the 2022 case, because this is still a continuation. So if they ask how many backyard flocks in Anarundel County, it is three, but two of them have been this year, most recently this week. Right, so other new things happening. We've talked quite a bit about youth vaping and cannabis prevention in our recent Boards of Health. We're trying something different and having a campaign. And this is really a combination of multiple bureaus within the department and our communications team, but working with ACPS to actually have a youth-led campaign. So they would be creating 15- to 30-second videos. There will be a panel that will judge those videos. There are prizes for the kids to win, and we'll also be giving them information about vaping, right? So that we know what's in their video is accurate. But our goal with this is to really use this funding for paid media, right? So actually targeting the platforms that people this age happen to be on and having a message that resonates with them, right? I would, I don't think any of my colleagues will be offended by this, but we are all too old to know exactly what will resonate with a 13-year-old, right? We are not in that age group. And so making sure that we are trying to put messaging together that resonates and also fosters some information sharing and some, you know, why is this something that you shouldn't be participating in? What are the dangers of vaping? And trying to encourage them to share that message with others. We will let you know how this goes. This will be starting at the top of the next school year, but we are working on pulling all of the logistics together right now. Wanted to make sure that we continue to share with you the cannabis hospitalizations that we're seeing throughout the county. Again, this is a relatively new metric that we've started to keep an eye on. But in addition to keeping an eye on this metric, also trying to stay in touch with our partners with EMS and others, what are they seeing, right? What sort of calls are we getting? And so I've been talking to the behavioral health staff a bit, and they've shared with me some increases sometimes that we're seeing in cannabis hospitalizations, particularly in high school students. So we're keeping a close eye on that. There's not enough data at this time to share it, but something that we are watching and trying to see what the trends might be. During our last Board of Health meeting, I infamously reminded that I said, I forgot my cannabis bag. Just wanted to make sure that I shared with you all what the safety bags actually look like. It just says, be safe, be responsible. There's a lock here so that folks can lock the bag. It is a bank bag. It's just been repurposed, but we are giving these away and trying to make sure that folks are, who are legally participating in the use of cannabis, are keeping it safe from others who are not legally able to participate. Something exciting from our Food Protection Services, and I'm sharing this one because I know you get these questions and concerns from restaurant owners. So within the next month, we will now have an online payment system for food services facilities to renew their licenses. So as of right now, they have to give us a check or come in person. And this also eliminates a lot of the administrative burden from the department. So we are very excited about this. They are testing it right now, but this just gives you a little bit of information on what they'll be able to do. And this has probably been in the works for two years. It has not been an easy process to get to this point, but we are really excited to have this. I think it'll also help quite a bit for those who have mobile units who have to come in the county, like, oh, I'm coming to an event in Anarundel County and I don't have a food service license. Their ability to do that without driving here ahead of time or too much ahead of time for that piece, we still have to inspect the vehicles. But we're excited about this, and I'd like to thank all of the environmental health staff who've really spent quite a bit of time making sure that this was going to be appropriate. And hopefully after testing, by the month of June, you'll see this on our website and available to businesses. So I'm going to jump into, that's kind of an overview of what's new. We share this slide with you every time we meet, and I recognize, and it is a frustration of us, of those of us within the department, that our causes of death, we always have to look several years back. But sharing with you what we're seeing as leading causes of death and really importantly, what we're also seeing with COVID deaths coming down year over year, which is fantastic. But heart disease and cancer remain number one and two. So we wanted to spend a little bit of time this morning sharing with you what we see in those areas, what are some of the disparities that we're running into, and what does it look like historically over the past few years? So we do see our Black non-Hispanic residents have higher rates of heart disease, and we also see higher hospitalizations due to heart disease. And so figuring out what we can do, and there will be a few things that we touch on throughout the presentation, different programs that will hit on heart disease-related weight management, et cetera, to make sure that folks are, we're trying to address that as we can. But this is a disparity that we are keenly aware of and wanted to bring it to your attention. So for cancer, just a little bit on what we're seeing and the rates comparing our white non-Hispanic residents or Black non-Hispanic residents and the disparities that we see here as well. So when we're talking about breast cancer, prostate cancer, and colorectal cancer, we have higher rates in our non-Hispanic Black residents. We also see the rates of death for lung cancer is higher for white non-Hispanic residents. And these are things that within the Health Department, we have programs to help folks who may not have the access to cancer screenings. We have a breast and cervical cancer program. They're also doing lung cancer screenings. These things are important, and so making sure that people know that these resources exist. And that's a big part of our challenge, is making sure that we're getting out to the populations that we're seeing the various disparities in, and then adding these services to the list of things that they know are available at the Health Department. And I don't know that this is one that people are always really aware of, but that screening piece is crucial because then we can also help connect people to care and making sure that they're getting the ongoing care that they will need. Right, gun violence and the intervention team. Just sharing a little bit with you about what we've been up to, particularly ahead of our budget presentation, because this is one of the proposed budget items within our presentation. And just a quick reminder that we are kind of organized in these three pillars of education and policy, data, and community as our kind of grounding and evidence-based practice that we're using to guide our work. From a data perspective, what we're seeing in the county right now is a lower homicide rate, which we are glad to see. And then looking at what are the things that we can be doing both with homicides and suicides, and what should we be doing differently? We're excited this year and last year because we do have a suicide prevention coordinator within the department now. And so thinking about ways for them to collaborate with the GVIT team and really take full advantage of their work together and making sure that we're doing more to address both. But you'll hear us talk a lot today, especially within the GVIT section, on the work that we're doing around homicides. And we'll talk a bit more when we get into behavioral health about the work that we're doing related to all types of suicides. This is really just a brief overview of the things that we've accomplished in FY25 within the team and things that have been ongoing. So when I talked about education and policy, we do do a decent amount with legislation, monitoring, making sure that we've provided letters of support, testimony. This year, we actually, I wasn't able to testify because I think it took eight hours and I had to go. But this is really important for us to make sure that we're supporting various legislation, both at a state and a county level. The legislation that I was set to testify on this year was actually around gun locks, not gun locks, gun literature in gun retailers that the state legislators were looking to move forward. As an example of a county that's doing it, I think it's important that we discuss how it works here, what people need to get it up and running, and sharing that information with other health departments is also something that we've been doing. We talk about the community aspect of our work, violence interruption programs, gun lock distribution, looking at action plans for North County, partnering with ROKA, which is a new organization to the county, and then looking at a new user-friendly dashboard where people can find information and really have a better understanding of what's happening with gun violence in the county. And that data is all primarily provided by our police partners, so we really want to thank them for their partnership in this work, both the county and the city. Just a shameless plug for our upcoming Gun Violence Intervention Team meeting. So we have a quarterly community meeting. This meeting will be June 5th. June is Gun Violence Awareness Month, and so we ask folks to wear orange, but if you could come out between 5:30 and 7:30, the Bush Annapolis Library. We will be there talking more about this work specifically, but also asking the community questions and allowing them to ask us questions. So to specifically talk about what we're continuing to see with the Violence Interruption Program, this is really just a brief overview. You all have seen this information before and heard it from me before of what the violence interrupters and esport are doing and what their goals are. And so far, we've seen success in their work. And I think it's really important to highlight that the work that they are doing in esport is one piece of the puzzle. I don't think it is a one-size-fits-all fix. It's like, hey, this program came in and it totally fixed some of the things that were happening. I think it's a multitude of factors that go into why gun violence rises, but also why it's coming down in esport. But just wanted to share with you, the map on your left is what we were seeing in Annapolis prior to the implementation of this program in the one-mile, I think it's two-mile radius of esport. And the map on the right is what we saw in 2024 in that same two-mile radius. And so excited to see contact shootings coming down in that area. This is something that we will continue to watch, continue to talk to our police partners about. But right now, what happens, and again, I really can't thank our police partners enough in this, in particular, this happens to be Captain Howard, but when there's a shooting in the city, he will send a member, myself and a member of my team, a notification of that. So we're able to let the team know, even if it's not within their neighborhood in that catchment area, because we know that violence doesn't stay contained to any one particular area and making them aware. But that's sort of almost real-time notification. They've got a lot to do so that, you know, we're not the first folks that they're letting know, but we really appreciate the ability to let that team know, to be on the lookout, to make them aware. Oftentimes, they may be aware already, but depending on when it's happened and where, they may not. And so we appreciate that workflow and that partnership. I'm going to move on to the Healthy Anarundel Coalition and some of the exciting work that we've been able to do there this year. We just passed Healthy Anarundel Day, which coincides with World Health Day, and there were a number of events free throughout the county for folks to participate in. So you'll see some pictures on the side. And we really thank all the folks who partner with us to make this happen, but also thanking the Health Department staff who worked diligently to organize it. It takes a while to get all of it up and running and to make sure that people know that it's happening, that they can participate in these things. Unfortunately, this year was raining, so they, the county waives park fees those days. So things like that may not have been quite as taken advantage of as we would like. But we have seen some real success, as well as the food collection and other activities happening throughout the county. So thank you to Mindy. A little, something else we're working on with the Healthy Anarundel Coalition is Find Help. And we often hear from folks, we don't know what the resources are, what's the best place to go find them, what's on your website, what's on other websites? And really, no one organization is going to have everybody else's information up there. But Find Help is, that is their sole purpose, making sure that they have information, that it's easily accessible for organizations to update, what they offer, their hours of operation. And so we have shared with our community health ambassadors, they have training on how to use Find Help in their outreach efforts. They have active accounts, but also working with our hospital partners and other groups to figure out ways to incorporate this into workflows. And just wanted to share with you a little bit of what we're seeing. Housing is the number one search. This is the data that we're able to pull from the backend. So from a health perspective, when we're thinking about what are the things that people need, stable housing and food security, right? These are the things that even when we're thinking about healthcare are incredibly important to people's health and things that we need to be addressing because people will not address other health issues that may be more minor. If you have to think about where you're going to live or what you're going to eat, those will be your priorities. And then we do see health coming in third as people looking for resources and things to find. So we think this is a really easy to navigate space as far as platforms go, and we really encourage folks to use it and to add their organizations to it. So information is out there for people to find. Okay, I'm going to get into the work of our Health Equity and Racial Justice Team, but I think it's important that we kind of always start with the level setting of what are we seeing throughout the county? Where are the areas that we're seeing more poverty, low birth weights, ED visits, SNAP benefits, and households without high school diplomas? To really set the stage for where we're doing our work and why we're working in different areas. And I don't think any of this is a surprise to most of you who know the county and the areas with more need really well. But also recognizing that oftentimes these areas are heavily populated with minority individuals, and what does that mean? And how are we appropriately addressing that? And that's where I think this office is incredibly important. So there's a couple of things that happen within our Health Equity and Racial Justice Office. There are three wonderful community health workers in that program. They are out at community events, sharing information about the Health Department on a regular basis. But we also do things like host a monthly forum for the public, as well as anyone else who would like to come. We host it hybrid. We invite you to come out at any time. Chair Hummer was there at our last meeting, so we appreciate that. But it gives us an opportunity to take information to the community, but also a unique bi-directional information sharing. They're able to ask us questions, that we're able to present on topics and see what they think we should be doing about something or understand the obstacles that they may be facing. And so I think as far as the Health Department is concerned, that information is really critical because what we think may be important to the community or what we think may be happening might not actually be what people are experiencing. And so having the ability to share information on colorectal cancer, transportation, and pedestrian planning, gun violence, recovery, suicide, sharing this information with the public, and really trying to time these conversations with what's going on. So back to school and vaccinations, respiratory illnesses, we really do think about what's happening, what are the particular months that we might be acknowledging, but also as we move into the summer, how are we preparing for water safety and summer safety and things of that nature? So again, we encourage you to come out. It's once a month, it's held hybrids. You can join either at the Health Department, at Harriet Struman, or join online, but it is open to the public and they are recorded if there's ever a topic that you want to go back and take a look at. And then our Community Health Ambassadors Program, this is one that you have seen in our budget requests, just like our GVIT work, for the last couple of years. This is a program that started during the pandemic, specifically looking to increase the vaccination rates in minority communities, and they were really, really effective in doing that. But what we found as the pandemic started to shift and change is that there were a number of other issues within their communities that we thought these individuals could help us address, and they have been incredibly effective. And now we really have a wonderfully trained workforce, has a lot of information, but is also able to get out into the communities. And then there are also folks who come back and share with us, hey, this isn't the topic that maybe is most prevalent in our community. Can you share more with us on alcohol or smoking? And so having that sort of partnership with them has been invaluable to us, but also for the community. Because as we moved into particularly more heavily in the behavioral health topics, overdose prevention, mental health first aid training, and then many of the health ambassadors have become mental health first aid trainers themselves, which means we're able to get more folks in the county trained. Not only are they able to recognize those symptoms, but they're able to train other organizations and other people. It's been incredibly helpful. And so we hope to continue this work. Here are some of the trainings and topics that have taken place for these groups, and they're able to request things. So it really is a partnership, and we try to be responsive to what they're seeing and what they're saying. They're using things like Find Help. We've also used some of the data that they're able to collect because they do surveys with staff members in our upcoming Community Health Needs Assessment, right? That was really valuable insight. They had talked to over 27,000 people and understanding what their health concerns are or other, right? We see housing still rising to the top amongst this group, food insecurity. And then we see access to mental health, community safety, are all topics that are coming up. And so we really have appreciated continuing this work and hope that as you and hope that as you look at the budget, this is one of the areas that will continue to be funded. Here's just a bit more about what they've been able to do between July of last year and March of this year. When I talked about the surveys that they're doing, that's the resident assessments, referring people to resources. They are attending events and hosting events. And then a little bit more about the mental health first aid training. So now having individuals who are able to do that in Korean and Spanish, but also including youth mental health first aid. And so I'd like to thank the Mental Health Agency for being the original folks who came out to do that training and coordinate that with us. Hope to continue this. As we talk more about behavioral health, understanding what the local behavioral health authority is is something that we, and I think is really important, that we continue to share. And every jurisdiction is required to have an LBHA, or Local Behavioral Health Authority. And in Anarundal County, we have a really unique partnership between the Mental Health Agency and the Anarundal County Department of Health. And so this collaboration allows for us to do a number of things. We work together very closely on meetings, symposiums, needs assessments, and addressing partnerships with the providers in the county, but understanding kind of the landscape of behavioral health in the county and hosting monthly meetings to talk to providers, inviting new providers to ask us questions and see what else we should be offering and what challenges that they are facing in serving residents. So just a couple of things that we've been working on from an LBHA perspective. Assisted outpatient treatment planning. This is from House Bill 576 from 2024. This is establishing assisted outpatient treatment in the state of Maryland. And so what's the real goal here? There are a number of individuals who are likely already interacting with our system, behavioral health system, potentially the judicial system as well, and looking at ways to enhance public safety. So if folks are not adhering to the treatment plans, this really allows for family members, other individuals, to have an assisted outpatient treatment order issued, right? But it takes a lot to set it up. So this includes having a psychiatrist onboard to do those initial assessments, even if they're already being seen in an outpatient perspective from some biopsychiatrists, and having supports like case management, therapy, medication management available to individuals, but working really closely with our judicial partners. So myself, Adrienne, and Sandy are part of a work group that's really looking closely at this to see how we can make this happen in the state of Maryland that includes multiple jurisdictions and taking this information back to our professional organizations. So the Maryland Association of Behavioral Health Providers, as well, Behavioral Health Authorities, as well as the Maryland Association of Health Officers. Another thing that we're working on from an LBHA perspective is the Consortium on Coordinated Community Supports. And so this is really a part of the blueprint work, but having additional behavioral health resources available, particularly to students. And how will that work? And so our role in this is to be the hub, right? So there will be other organizations, and they've already gotten started. It's fantastic. And they are considered the spokes, but working with ACPS to see what sort of things can these individuals provide. And all of it has been kind of dictated by what's allowable, what sort of supports and resources are we looking for? And so our role as the LBHA is that grant oversight, looking at the performance metrics. And this is still very much a work in progress. So the spokes were selected before the hubs, which is a little unusual, but it means that we're still learning what our role in this will look like and trying to make sure that we're up to speed. But wanted to share with you a little bit about the organizations that are already doing this work. And there've been a little over 4,000 students served. So we'll continue to come back with what we're seeing and the results of it. But right now, it's a little early, and we're still getting our feet wet with exactly what the role will look like. But excited to work with the Mental Health Agency on understanding the different tiers. So looking at school-wide and grade-level interventions, looking at small groups for evidence-based education and programming, and then the top tiers really looking at one-on-one therapeutic intervention. So you'll see these different organizations, including the Department of Health, participating throughout and doing different things. Okay, so since we're on behavioral health, we're going to keep moving. Wanted to share a little bit about the work that we're doing with families who are in recovery. And some of this is specific to women with children and men with children. And we've been really excited to have recovery housing come onboard in the last year for men with children. Placement for single fathers was notoriously difficult, and there really weren't spaces, because most of the recovery houses are either men or women. And there were spaces for women with children, but not necessarily the same for fathers. So we have a second one coming online really soon, if it didn't already. And we have had a waitlist for the first one for fathers, which is fantastic. And sometimes our ability to place depends on how many children they have and the rules and how many rooms are available. But really excited that that is happening and continuing to look for expanding recovery housing for women with children and that support. And making sure that we're supporting the whole family. There's a lot to be done in this work and support for those children. But the excitement of I have my own room, they're able to do a little bit of decorating, I think goes a really long way for kids who have been through a lot and in a tough spot. So we're excited to see this coming onboard, particularly for single fathers. Our Wellmobile, still up and running. This thing takes more maintenance than most vehicles. So if it's off the road, it's probably in the shop for some sort of scheduled maintenance. I'd like to thank the folks who make sure that it stays up and running. But our telehealth services are available Monday through Friday. So even if you can't come out to the Wellmobile, we will get folks started over the phone. And we've incorporated some new things over the last two years. Some of this had been a part of the Wellmobile prior to the pandemic, and some of it is new, particularly looking at wound care. We see for a number of individuals who are using drugs, wound care is really important. Trying to make sure that we're preventing those infections. And it honestly is a way to start that conversation, even if people aren't ready to get into recovery, thinking about how can we help you manage your wounds? Make sure that you're being appropriately treated? And then start that therapeutic relationship and relationship building and conversation, where hopefully we're building the trust that people will come back to us. So really excited about our wound care offerings, but also making sure that we're doing things like testing for STIs and HIV and getting people in treatment. So here's just a little bit about the numbers that we're seeing. And really, most excited that folks are keeping those initial appointments. So when we say we're connecting you to services, that 78% of those individuals are actually making it, are referred to keep their initial appointments. And then 62% or 62% are still active after 30 days, which is wonderful. Okay, so our dashboard. This is something you can see on our website. We like to make sure that we're keeping it up to date for folks, but understanding that we have seen, and it's not just Anarundal County, nationwide, a real decrease in overdoses in the last year. And so in 2025, this is the fewest opioid overdoses we've seen since 2019, which is very promising. And when folks say, well, what is this related to? I think there's a number of things. I think it is the availability of naloxone. When you think about one out of every four fatal overdoses did not receive it, this means that a lot of people are using it, which is fantastic. And that 90% of the non-fatal overdoses did receive a dose, which means that for a lot of people, it's working. But I think it's also communication and people having a better understanding of the opioid crisis and hopefully getting more people into treatment, which is ultimately the goal. And so when we look at this decrease of 43% in fatal overdoses, it's really exciting. But what we also see when we dive a little bit deeper into that data is that the decreases are not shared equally amongst different populations. So we have kind of seen our overdoses sit at the same place for black men and women, as well as our Hispanic residents. So this decrease is primarily in our white residents. And so thinking about what to do differently and how to make sure we are seeing the same sort of success across populations in the county. Other things that we're working on, that we're excited about, is seven days a week. If you, we have two peer support specialists who are really on call and making outreach to anyone who has survived an overdose. So trying to provide those resources, contacting individuals. And we are able to contact about 43% of those folks afterwards in trying to offer services. And about 25% of that 43% are actually linked to treatment as a result. But that's something, over the last few years, getting to that seven day a week and making sure that we didn't have gaps on the weekends and evenings has been incredibly important. So I want to thank the folks who do that work, because it is a 24/7 job. But very important. Just a few statistics on the vending machines that we launched a few years ago. We are looking to expand these machines. We have an opportunity for some funding. So we'll likely be coming back to you with new locations for additional machines when we meet in the fall. But this just gives you a little bit about what's been given out in those machines and what folks are taking. So really glad to see over 3,000 Narcan kits dispensed to the public. And hopefully, folks are thinking about how to just have one as a part of your first aid kit, how to keep one on you and available, even if you don't think you know anyone who may be using opioids. You never know. And we want to make sure people are prepared. But we also want to make sure that we're putting them in locations that we know we're seeing more overdoses and reaching those who need it most. The one arm of this is normalizing it for everyone, but it's also trying to get out to those residents who are most in need. So the map that you see here are the areas that we see the highest number of overdoses. So the darker, the color, so the darker red is where we're seeing the highest number of overdoses in the county. And so when we're thinking about where to put these machines and where they should be located, really using this sort of data to drive where they are. So if someone says, well, why is it not in my neighborhood? It's most likely because your neighborhood may not have the same level of need. But this is the data that we use to kind of drive that decision-making. And what sort of location is it? We need it to be accessible to the public. We need it to be open as many hours as possible. That's probably the biggest challenge, is that most of the locations that they're in are not open late at night. But those are things that we're consistently looking at. I spoke to you a little bit earlier about our work in suicide prevention. So we've been able to offer community trainings on counseling, on access to lethal means. So when we talk about what are lethal means, and this is some of that intersection between our gun violence work and suicide prevention work, also question, persuade, and refer, mental health first aid training, and then general suicide topics. But we will also be offering our second summit this year, Help Healing and Hope, which is Equitable Care for Every Heart, June 17th, in partnership with the Mental Health Agency, but as well as the Community College. They have been wonderful. It's a great space. If you have an opportunity to come out, it's between 9:00 and 4:30. And they're wonderful workshop keynote speakers, panel discussions. And so also for providers, we have CEUs. So we've been, I think last year was the first time that we did it, but we had a really good turnout and excited about what this year will bring. And it's not just people from Anarundal County attending. We do see folks across the state coming out to gain this information and to work together. And there's just a bit on the bottom about some of the things that we, numbers that we've been able to, of trainings and people that we've reached. So now I'm going to represent a little bit of what we see with the Mental Health Agency. I won't read all of this to you. They do important work, but I know the hot topic is almost always crisis. So I want to make sure we get into what we're seeing with crisis intervention this year and assessment by dispatch time. So 40% of the dispatches are outside of business hours. I think that's important for folks to understand when they're seeing the highest number and when people are needing more assistance. So you'll see the bright, the orange bars are when we're seeing more folks reaching out for help. And then here's a bit on just numbers across the board and what they've seen in the years, the past few years. One of the things to note is the acuity. While the numbers, I think, have gotten a bit, still higher than pre-pandemic, but they've leveled out a bit, acuity continues to rise. And so when we think about who's calling into the warm line, this gives you a little bit of perspective, pre-COVID, where we are now. So still slightly higher than what we were seeing before and understanding that the support is still needed to provide these services. Youth mental health is also a big topic. So making sure that we're looking at what we see for calls by age and understanding who's calling. So the children's warm line, the adult warm line, and the differences that we're seeing since FY '20 to date. And then the Mental Health Stabilization Services. So what's happening as we try to stabilize individuals? Parents report a 48% decrease in the intensity of behaviors and a 71% decrease in the parental perception of the problem, which we think is really wonderful to see. And we want to make sure that we're trying to continue to support these families throughout this time. It gives you just a bit on how many individuals and families were served in FY '23 and FY '24. And then this is a new program, so I wanted to make sure it was here. I will not do it full justice in describing it. But if you have any questions, I'll make sure that we make time for Adrienne to come up and talk a little bit about the Mental Health Court and court diversion. I think the Mental Health Agencies work in starting this and really trying to make sure that we are understanding people's treatment plans, that things are being approved, that we're making this an integrated part of the work and that crisis is a part of this, is really important, but also lays some of the groundwork for us to participate in assisted outpatient treatment and understanding how to work with the judiciary. So we'd like to thank District Judge Alexander, who's really been a champion of this and has presented in a number of different places on the work that's happening here in Anarundal County. I think it's a model that potentially could be followed, and I'm excited to see what numbers and data we'll have to present to you in future presentations. Going to move right into Disease Prevention and Management, which is one of the bureaus within Department of Health. They're the group working on the measles. They're the, one of the groups working on bird flu. But they're also the group that houses our Healthy Communities Program, which is one of the budget requests that you'll see from this year. Again, not dissimilar to gun violence and our work with our Community Health ambassadors. This is something for the past few years we've had as a budget request. And we've had the good fortune of being funded with one-time federal funds and this year hoping to really get to a place where we're maintaining this and having it in our general funds. A little bit about what the Healthy Community Program is about and what some of the differences are compared to what we were doing prior to the pandemic. So prior to the pandemic, our health centers, so thinking about the Parole Health Center, the Magathie Health Center, and the Glen Burnie Health Center, the staff there was shared. So if Glen Burnie was open, Parole was closed and vice versa. With about the addition of 12 to 14 staff members, and these are down from the 200 of the COVID-era days, those staff members allow us to staff the health centers multiple days a week and simultaneously, including adding Magathie to it, which previously used to be more of an administrative office where we didn't see patients, but adding that site as well. So when we look at our ability to vaccinate more children, we have seen more people and real increases in the number of folks served as a result of having those additional clinic hours. It also has allowed for us to do back-to-school clinics, evening clinics, weekend clinics, particular times of the year when we know demand is higher. But also our mobile services. And this is not something we did a lot of before. We were partnering to do flu shots, but things like our homebound folks and partnering with school health services we were doing prior to. But this has also allowed for us to do back-to-school clinics as well as going out to shelters, recovery houses, detention centers, and really making sure that we're trying to take these services to people and not always expecting individuals to come to us. Something we were also able to do this year was adding the pneumococcal vaccine to our homebound residents. We've seen a rise in pneumonia. And this is something that our hospital partners talked to us about. What could we do? Pneumococcal vaccine is not something we typically provide in the Health Department, but we thought we were really missing an opportunity if we're going into a home to vaccinate probably the most at-risk individuals, because they are immobile, by not providing those pneumococcal vaccines. So I want to thank that team for finding a way to incorporate that. Not going to talk a whole lot about respiratory illness season and where we ended up. This season, and we've seen every season since the pandemic, having This season, and we've seen every season since the pandemic, having flu, COVID, the common cold, RSV, kind of really all being in circulation at the same time, does definitely change what we're seeing from an urgent care and ED utilization pre-pandemic compared to now, as well as pneumonia, right? A lot of those viruses then can progress into pneumonia for individuals. So this year, we saw more walking pneumonia in children, and so just keeping an eye on that. Also wanting to say that the wastewater data that we're able to see and maintain coincides with when we're seeing those peaks. So if you're looking at hospitalizations and when we see the peaks in December, January through February, we see the same thing, and we're able to test wastewater for RSV, COVID-19, and influenza. So it's a really helpful tool in helping us understand when the public is most at risk and particularly for people who are at high risk. One of the things that we are trying to both better understand and to do is looking at the rates of vaccinations. So if you'll compare the rates of our COVID vaccines with about fifteen percent of the county being vaccinated, even in our seniors, we're only hitting about thirty-three percent compared to the rates of individuals being vaccinated for flu every year. We're definitely, we've seen a decrease year over year in the number of individuals getting vaccinated for COVID, and vaccination is still very effective in reducing the chances of death and hospitalization. And so this is one that we will continue to work on, but I think understanding levels of vaccine fatigue, messaging, and how do we get to a place knowing that influenza vaccines have been out much longer than COVID? What is the ramp up? What do we look like? Because obviously, we came from much, much higher rates across the county, and this is not unique to Anarundel County, but it is something that we want to bring to people's attention because we think it's really important that folks continue. And we are still seeing residents dying of COVID-19. We had eighty-four deaths, unfortunately, in 2024. STI prevention and outreach, here's some data for you to look at, but I wanted to highlight that we have created, and we're the first local health department in the state to have a standing order to treat syphilis in the field. And so what does that mean? That means for individuals who may be experiencing homelessness or who may be transient, understanding how we can treat them as quickly as we can and treat them wherever they are is really important. And so as they roll out that protocol, I'm excited to make sure we're able, again, to reach people mobily, and these are things that the Healthy Communities Program and others provide us an opportunity to do. Another thing that this group is really working on is a program that is championed by the state, which is scrub hands and disinfect every surface. But the state reached out to local health departments and asked, is there any way that we could assist in educating and doing some information sessions with nursing homes about how to cut down on their risk for infectious disease with residents? And so that has started, and we're excited to be partnering also, but to allow people to ask questions, and it makes it easier when we have outbreak investigations and we have things that we're not just coming out at those times. I think building those relationships with these organizations is very important. And then I'm actually going to skip through some of this, but I mentioned earlier when we talked about our ability to screen for breast and cervical cancer and mammograms. Here's a bit of that data and what's available. Lung cancer screenings, as I mentioned, we do have the ability to do that. We've only had one resident take us up on it, but it's critically important. But I did want to highlight that this group is a part of TOPPS, which is Taking Pounds Off Sensibly. There are about twenty participants right now in the Pitt-Moorier Recreation Center in Annapolis. We're also looking at Glenberne and Edgewater for chapters, but because the folks who are participating in that have lost about two pounds a month, the organization that is really the folks who put out that curriculum has recognized that chapter for its excellent work. So just wanted to congratulate them and tell them to please keep it up, and they will be expanding that. But when we talk about things like heart disease, these are some of the things we can do from a health department perspective to help folks better get into different lifestyle changes and to have a bit of support when doing it. So that weekly meeting is really critical. Okay, I'm going to move through some of this. Here's just a couple reminders, things like Healthy Start WIC, when you all were asking about federal funding, our M-Tip program. Sometimes when people think about grants, they think about very short-term programs, and we do have grants that sometimes, hey, we're going to do this for three or four years. We also have really longstanding grants, and Healthy Start is one of those, right? Our WIC programs. And so when you're thinking about what's grant-funded, it's not always a new thing that we've just applied for or something that we're trying to address short-term. Much of that grant funding that you saw on that slide is associated with programs like this that have been in place for quite some time. Okay, so wanted to touch just a little bit on the maternal and infant health task force and the work that we're doing there. By the time we meet with you next, the strategic plan will be ready to go, but we're really working through advocacy, education, and improving care coordination. And so we're excited to have as many partners as we do at the table and new people. Honestly, the more we talk about this, come on board. When we presented at the Health Equity and Racial Justice Forum last month, there are new individuals who had not heard of it before and say, hey, how can I get involved? What can I do to be a part of this work? And so we are still taking new members and excited to have folks joining us. But then the maternity community advisory council is equally as important as the task force. And I would say that these folks are probably giving a bit more because they are community members. This is not a part of their work. This is not something they're doing as a part of their job. They are meeting with us in the evening and really giving us their thoughts as the local experts on maternal health needs. What should we be doing differently? What's working? What's not working? Dr. Vada is an OB-GYN, as well as Bella Young, co-chair this council, and they really do a lot of work to make sure that folks have the information they need, that we're level-setting, but also that there's a shared power dynamic here, that it's not, the health department is telling you what to do or when to show up. What would you like to work on? How can we make sure that you have the skills to do the things that you'd like to do? And so I really want to thank the folks that have joined this council because their input to what we are doing as professionals is just something that we should be having more of, right? Centering that lived experience in our planning and our work is critical. And here's just a little bit about what we've been doing with that group, but also creating an action plan, and they will be looking at that strategic plan and hopefully meeting with the task force over the summer to give their feedback. This isn't a plan that we will be developing in a vacuum. And so we've had more folks, again, come forward and say that they'd like to be a part of this group. This group is really designated for people with the lived experience, and the other group is really for those who are working in the space. Okay, asthma and lead. I'm going to move through this one a little quickly, but just wanted you to know that we started with a goal of decreasing the number of asthma-related emergency interventions by twenty percent by 2026, and we are well on our way to doing that. We've decreased the emergency department visits by about nineteen percent. Again, I think this is multifactorial, but we know that we are being referred the children who are going to the hospital the most, and we hope that this increases their ability to participate at school as well as feeling better and having their asthma better controlled. But also just talking about lead a little bit because this is the other half of our asthma and lead program. So wanted you all to understand how we're going out, what we're seeing, and sharing a bit of the data. So again, I'm going to move kind of quickly through this, but what are the common lead exposures that we're seeing? Parent occupation, so if you have a parent who's working in welding or fishing and they come home with things on their clothing, it's really important that they take that off, clean themselves off, but we are seeing that with children. Housing, which is one that's not usually a surprise to folks. That's usually the first thing that people think about. Also international spices, and then looking at, what are some of the other unique things that we're seeing? I was actually just telling my husband about this last night. My kids were eating applesauce, and I'm thinking, which one is this? What's the exposure? Because we have seen it recalled in particularly ones that were cinnamon-flavored, but pre-packed lunch kits and other things that we've seen. So here's just a little bit about the lead levels and diagnoses within the county and what we're looking at. And there is no safe amount of lead, to be perfectly honest, but these are the levels that we're looking at and trying to pay attention to. And when is it really particularly dangerous for kids? And that's hard to say based on their age, but some of it would, looking at the yellow bar and up, but honestly, even in that red range is really concerning. But these are all folks that we are addressing. Okay, here's just a little map on where we're seeing higher rates or higher incidence of lead by zip code. And again, not surprising based on the numbers that we saw and where we're seeing more disparities in the county and just a little bit on the lead sources. Move quickly through our dental program. Excited to be able to continue to expand with the community schools to providing more sealants to more third graders in twenty-seven community schools as well as to preschoolers and the Judy Centers and Head Start. One thing I wanted to note about our medical assistance program and eligibility, that as of June thirtieth, the, there had been the ability for people to apply over the phone, so they could call us and we could process telephone applications. That ability has stopped or will stop as of June thirtieth, so we're trying to let people know because that has been in place for over five years now and wanting to make sure that we are appropriately addressing what that means for clients, but also what it means for the staff as we make that change. And then school health. I always like to include the numbers because I think it, it's hard to kind of understand exactly how much work they're doing every day across the school systems, but knowing that there have been over five hundred thousand health room visits, more than a hundred thousand medications administered, it's a lot of work, and they are a well-oiled machine. New things happening, the Vision to Learn Program, and they are an organization who was primarily, at least in Maryland, worked in Baltimore. They approached the school system and the health department about how to partner, and they provide comprehensive eye exams and glasses. And so for the staff that we have doing hearing and vision screenings, this is really critical because we refer families and say, hey, we've screened your child. It's not a comprehensive exam, but it looks like your child may need more attention with their hearing or vision. For vision, now we have this partner that's able to continue to do those comprehensive eye exams for free and to provide the glasses for free. So for the kids who have participated in this, most of those families are actually taking the glasses and doing this work. I had the opportunity to talk to our vision and hearing screening techs last week, and right now they're hard at work calling all of the families to make sure if they've referred the child, have you followed up? Have you gone out? And hopefully, more than fifty percent of families will do that, but I think programs like this really close that gap. And a completely different nursing supervisor that had nothing to do with this when I asked, she's not a vision and hearing tech, rather, she had something to do with it. How were things going? This was the thing she was most excited about. She's like, we had a kid tell her teacher, this is the first time she could see her. I thought, well, that's great. I'm glad that the child is able to have that new experience at school and that they're excited about it, and they try to make it fun. So here's just some of the schools that it is expanding to, and I think Dr. Vada went out to model some of the glasses, as she has many different, many various pairs. This is another new thing with schools, which is there was a law in 2024 that says we have to stock albuterol, and this means any child who may not, who may have a diagnosis, but they don't have their inhaler on them, we now have it, and we have, we've had two hundred and thirty-five students come in to use the stock inhalers. So it's working for its intended purpose. As a person with an albuterol inhaler, I have a new appreciation for why these children are coming in and what they're doing, and hopefully how much better it allows them to feel and to participate in school. We shared with you that we had a school-based health planning grant through the state and wanted to give you, the real key update is that we've been able to do a needs assessment and some work with the community and share some of those results. So there's a steering committee. The organizations represented on the steering committee are listed here, but our goal was really to conduct a comprehensive localized needs assessment and determine if school-based health centers could help potentially meet some of the needs we're seeing in Anarundel County. And so when you think about our community health needs assessment, here's some of the things that went into that. A lot of data from various sources and perspectives, but also community forums, focus groups, surveys, listening sessions, and key informant interviews. I'm going to tell you a bit about those, but also wanted to highlight, there's been a lot of work done to make sure that folks knew that this was happening, so partnering to get emails out to parents, having ads, having things on display, and there's also a video if at any point you'd like to take a moment and watch it to share what is a school-based health center, right? So people understand what it is before they get started. But what we saw, we did focus groups with the names listed here in that top box. There were key informant surveys with folks listed at the bottom, and this gives you a little bit about who responded. Now, there are about fifty duplicates, so you could be an AACPS and a parent, you could be an employee and a parent, so there's about fifty duplicates in this, but this gives you a sense of who's actually responding to the surveys. Probably not surprising, students were least likely to fill it out, but we did get great information from their focus group. So what services are most likely to be used? Sick visits were selected, as well as immunization and sports physicals, and mental health continues to come up. Are people currently connected? So despite the fact that most of the people who were completing the survey have healthcare in the community setting, they still said that they would use a school-based health center, which we think is really important. And amongst the students that did participate, they were most likely to say yes, they would use this. I think from the key informants, and we're thinking, when we're thinking about stakeholders in the county and other agencies, broad support across those groups, understanding that logistically this is tough and there will be funding questions and concerns, and then mixed support. I think families fell two directions with this. Some families having concerns about consent, concerns about how involved the parents would be, what does this mean for coordination with their providers in the community, and then other families are like, this is great, we would love to have this access. And so we know that those things will exist, and this isn't a thing that people have to participate in. So for those families who would like to, we really think it's something that could be beneficial, but the work of this steering committee is to continue to really look at what it would look like, where it could be, and working very closely with AACPS to answer some of those questions. But this is something that will probably take us a couple more years to get into place, but really starting this groundwork of understanding what people want to see, and we have much, much more data on this if you're interested in more of what people had to say. Wanted to get into the school health turnover because this has been a topic that we've talked about quite a bit in the last few years, and we are excited to say that this year is the first year since the start of the pandemic that we're actually starting to see the turnover rate decrease. And we do think that is directly related to the investments that were made last year in salaries and benefits for these staff members. So this year, and that year, last year was focused on, the salaries were focused on the nurses and trying to bring them up to comparable jurisdictions around us. This year, we're looking at the health assistants who do amazing work in our health rooms, definitely have lower salaries, and how do we make them more comparable to other jurisdictions around us? So when we're looking at our request this year, that is one of the requests is specifically for health assistants, and we see when we're talking about where the turnover is, we've seen a decrease in the school nurses and licensed practical nurses. We're seeing the most of that turnover in health assistants, and unfortunately, the timing for us, the State Board of Nursing has changed the rules around being a training center. So for those of you who weren't aware, in Anarundel County, we have had a training center for certified nursing assistants. So you could come to us and apply for a job as a health assistant without that certification, and we have the ability to train people and do that work. The way that the state is moving now is in a direction of having more geriatric nursing assistants trained, and some of the skills that you have to do to pass that are just not things that we're able to do, you'd have to do in a hospital inpatient setting. And so a lot of our ability to accurately do that training based on the state standards has now stopped. So instead of training people or having a mix of experienced people who come to us with the certification, as well as people that we're able to train, now everyone we hire will have to come with the certification, which means more competitive salaries, hiring experienced individuals, and so trying to prepare for that a bit with increasing those salaries. And we're almost finished. Environmental health. We talked about the changes to the application process for food inspections, but here's just a little bit on how many folks we are providing licenses for. So here's the food services facilities, the number of inspections, re-inspections. re-inspections, and complaints that we go out and investigate. Rodent control. I can never come here and not talk about this, but we're excited this year because the italicized neighborhoods are new neighborhoods that we will be going into this year and we need your help with this. So when we go out and we are looking at neighborhoods and understanding where we're seeing complaints, what's happened with the surveys, we send out letters to tell everyone, hey, we're coming. We also put door hangers on their doors, but we cannot legally go onto your property without you telling us yes. A lot of people assume that we can. Aren't you the county? Can't you just come out? We cannot. For the neighborhoods that we've been in, they understand this process. We're getting a lot more engagement. They will give us their sign off, yes, please come treat my property. But if we don't get that sign off from homeowners, we cannot go onto their property. So that's where we really need you all to let residents know when you're having community meetings and they're talking about this, that if you get a letter from the Health Department, you get a door hanger, please respond to it. We will come out and treat your property. But we do need that consent from you to make that happen. So if there's anything you can do to help us with that, we would appreciate it. If you need any more information, please let us know. But excited to expand to these additional neighborhoods and hopefully, continue to address this issue throughout the county. Well-inseptic permits. Just wanted to let folks know that wet season ended on May 2nd. This is a new slide. We don't typically get into what happens. We tell you more about how many people we were able to address, but why is groundwater important? Making sure that it stays safe for everyone and that the sewage systems that we have throughout the county are working appropriately, don't fail prematurely, really helps protect everybody's groundwater from that contamination. But those perk tests, I think our team completed over 100. And even when we have years like this year where we have to start late because there's not enough water in the water tables and we may have to end early because it's a drought, we do have ways to continue to serve people who may apply in the interim. But I don't believe there was anyone that we couldn't serve this year. But sometimes when it ends early, people don't know that it's ending. And so just wanted to share a little bit of information about what we do to monitor the wells throughout the year and then what we're doing. If people come to us and say, hey, I need a perk test, if we have some historic information on neighboring properties, it takes a lot more time, but they do try to use that information to help get people what they need. And we know that this is critically important if you are trying to build something new or we don't want to hold up the process for folks. And that's the end.
It is always amazing to hear everything that y'all do. I mean, it's incredible. It's, everything touches on health, so, to have that. Do I have any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first appreciate your presentation and you did a fantastic job, although I know you were worried about your cough. So kudos to you, you didn't even drink water.
I'm so glad.
I'm going to start with a question that I sent in advance because I did hear from a group of ladies in the Severna Park area who have created the Chesapeake Breasties Group. And they were able to go back to a 1996 task force that looked at cancer controls. They are very interested in collecting data to then use as a jumping off point for trying to get some study funding. Are we still tracking to the level that we were back in 1996? Breast cancer cases? Where is that data stored if we are? And how can we get more information?
Yeah, I can't necessarily tell you if we're tracking to the level that we were in 1996. We'd have to look back at some historic information and really see what's in there. There is information that's publicly available on cases. Some of it depends, right? What we can share and what they're looking for specifically? Because when we have certain numbers, if it's under a certain number of individuals in the county, we can't share publicly. Because then people can start to say, oh, you had this over here, and identify the individuals. Then it, so it is a question of what are they looking for? And how much can we share publicly? Really depends on the piece of information that they're looking for and how many people are impacted and whether or not we can actually aggregate it at a high enough level to make it something that we can share. But our Breast and Cervical Cancer Program staff do have data for the county and they understand where it's happening and who it's happening to, when people are being diagnosed. So it's a bit more of what would they like to do with it? But it is something that we can take a look at if they have specific ask. It's hard to say like, oh, because we can't just hand you all the breast cancer data. So if they have specific measures that they're looking at. But it's a bit harder for us to go back to 1996. So if they have something from 96 that they can send to us, we could take a look at that and see if it's something that we're still measuring.
Okay, perfect. I think they actually have the task force from start to finish, all of the documents. They reached out to someone who was on that task force. I think that they are looking specifically at clusters of cases in their immediate Severna Park community. There were 12 diagnoses in this last year. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And typically, if we're looking at that low of a number, it's not something we can share because then we're essentially sharing people's protected health information.
Understood, appreciate that. I will let, I have a whole lot of questions, actually. No, not a lot, maybe some.
Ms. Robine?
I feel like I have a shorter list than I usually have. I just, I'm like, I feel like over the past few years, the amount of work that you've done has, or the amount of areas that you're touching upon has grown so much that you're just getting deeper into, you know, all levels of community health. And I just think that's so wonderful. I'm so glad you're able to do that. So in comparison, this is a lot fewer. I probably have like four or five. So I wanted to start with that resource that you mentioned towards the beginning called Find Help, which sounds amazing. And I would love to help get the word out about it. One of the questions I had was, you said that providers that, you know, are, that have different services that they can offer, you know, can go and register and sort of describe their services. Is there, and you said they can also update it. And obviously, having updated information is really important. Is there a mechanism that ensures that the information in Find Help is updated? Like, is there sort of going back and forth? I just, I just know that, you know, I don't know, experience working sort of in the space of like, hey, share your data, tell us what you're doing. And then, you know, it's over, it starts out as a wonderful resource, but then over time, because it's not updated, it loses effectiveness. So I'm just curious if there's something like that built into the system, you know, to keep in contact with providers to make sure that they still are providing what's on the, is it a website? Is it?
Yeah, it is a website. And I'm actually gonna ask our Director of the Office of Assessment and Planning, Donna Perkins, who has worked really closely with Find Help on helping to develop the platform to answer that question. I don't believe there is something that forces it, but Donna can definitely tell us a bit more about how people are able to engage with the tool.
Thank you. Hi, good morning, thank you. So the answer is yes. There's a couple of ways that the platform is always being updated. The first way is actually crowdsourcing. So if someone finds information, they're searching, they find a resource and they follow up on it. And what they find out is not in fact accurate. They have a way of reporting that to Find Help. And then Find Help actually has staff members whose sole job is to continually update that information. So part of it's crowdsourcing. And then those staff at Find Help are also constantly checking, trying to update that information because it is a lot to keep updated. We've also worked very closely in getting accurate information in, at least as a starting point. So we've worked through the, the Anarundel Coalition with our mental wellness and also with our Healthy Living Partners to help make sure that their services are in there, that it is correct. So that's another avenue that we use to try to make sure it's kept updated.
Awesome, thank you. That really sounds like an incredible resource. Madam Chair, do you mind if I go and ask a few more? Or I can, we can rotate, whatever's.
Let's rotate, let's have, keep them on there. Ms. Lott better.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have, I have a couple of questions. But I will start with, I noticed there was the chart for the cannabis emergency room visits. And the age group, 21 to 44, seemed, looked higher, if I was reading the chart correctly. And I was just curious if there were any hypothesis, you know, to why that age group ends up in the emergency room, you know, more often? Or i- if that's research in progress or, you know, the, on the to-do list to try and wrap your, our heads around that? I'm just curious if there was anything known. There seemed to be a significant kind of jump there for that age group.
I think they're the age group, when you think about who can legally go and purchase it, that definitely has something to do with when you start to see those increases. But why 44 versus 50? I don't think we know at this point. So that's something that we'll continue to keep an eye on to find out if this is the group that is indeed, continues in this, down this path. And I do think, and this is anecdotal, as folks who maybe have not used cannabis in a while and decide they're gonna go give it a whirl, start low and go slow, right? And not, whether or not people are actually doing that and biting off more than they can chew, no pun intended, is something that may be happening. And as it's been legalized for more time, will we see anything change as people understand how it actually impacts them? Or that like, I tried this and not for me? So we really don't know yet. But that's something that I think we'll have to be on the lookout for. But the different ways of consuming it, I think, hit people differently and how much they understand about, I'm drinking it, I'm eating it, I'm smoking it. What does that mean and when will it hit you? It's something we'll keep watching, but.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to go back to, thank you, everyone. I wanted to go back to the rodent control. So when you're, you've asked for our assistance and we are happy to be a partner, or at least I'm happy to be a partner with your efforts. When you're asking for consent to come on private property, what does that look like? Do they need to send an email? Do they need to make a phone call? What is their, what is the action item you're looking for so that that homeowner or community association knows how to consent?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Don Kurdiyan to come up to tell us all the different ways that you can do this to what's happening with that team. Yeah, pick a seat.
Good morning. So with the rodent control program, two weeks before we go into the community, we send out a letter to every address in the community. It has contact information on there. And we, during the rodent program, which is from May to November, we hire a secretary that is there to man the phones and they call and then they grant us permission. And then they will get that to the, to the rodent tech teams so that we know that we have permission to be on that property and won't be charged with trespassing.
May I follow up?
Yes.
So what, what, because I'll put this in my newsletter and we'll, we'll be very targeted about it. What are they consenting to? Someone coming on their property and then what, and then doing what?
So what we do is, is we do a survey on the property and what we're looking for is rodent or rat infestations. And we actually count the number of burrows that we find on a property. We also look for the causes of the rodents. So we'll be looking for trash buildup on the property and that they're maintaining their property and not providing for harborage and food. If they are, we want them to eliminate those violations. It's an educational program, it's not an enforcement program. We work with them to get those violations corrected and then we will provide free pesticide services to get rid of the rats.
Okay, one more and then I'm done. So that's a good point. So you're not, a homeowner isn't inviting you onto their property to then cite them for a violation? Is it educational and prevention? Or will they be cited and have like a fine?
It, it is an educational program, but after we attempt for multiple times to get them to fix the violations, we will then take enforcement. Because where, the goal is, is we want to eliminate the rodents in the community and we need their help. And providing harborage and food is not gonna get rid of the rats.
Thank you. That's very helpful, thank you very much.
We're happy to share the letter with you all that we send out to residents.
Oh, that would be great.
I just signed off on it this week, so you know what they will receive in the mail and what that verbiage is.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna follow up on the rats. I just sent you all, another community in my district where they are saying that they're having a rat problem. So if you can check that out, Sunset Beach. Apparently, they've killed 10 rats so far and they're not happy about it, so.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll look at that. So when we, when we put our program together, we pull all of our complaints for the last three years and look at and assess where we get those complaints from. And as you can see, we've expanded into your, your area this year, as well as Ms. Homer's area this year to try to expand. We're always in Mr. Smith's area up in the northern part of the county. But this year, we were able to expand out to some of the other parts of the county to provide services.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And I'll add with the rat, I want to thank you. Y'all have been very responsive to my community that reached out. They had some people really organized in the community to, with the rodent problem. And they are very grateful for how well y'all have responded to them. Thank you. So Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. Well, Mr. Kurdiyan's here. Abandoned houses that are in really bad shape. I know we've talked on this a lot. I have, I think, five at this point in time. Can you share a little bit about the limitations that you have? And I'm curious if Anarundel County is any more different than other jurisdictions in our ability to address those homes?
So in, so for the Health Department, we, we get complaints for abandoned homes. Every one of your districts has abandoned homes and, you know, you see them all the time. We go out and assess the property and we're looking for violations of the Property Maintenance Code and we're looking at the exteriors. And we're looking for trash, we're looking for rodents. And we're looking at to see if the buildings are open to casual entry. Based, with the demolition fund, which is a capital project that we have, we can eradicate the rats, we can get the buildings boarded up, open to casual entry, and we can have the trash removed. That's what our authority is for the Health Department. We also partner with DPW, who can go in under their capital project and cut the high weeds. And that will also control some of the rats on the property. And then, when the properties get in really bad shape, IMP also has the authority to have the building removed when they get to a point where they're now unsafe. So most of the time, they are not at the point of unsafe. And that's where your constituents get frustrated because they want them removed, they're an eyesore to their community. But until they become unsafe, can they, can they be removed? The Health Department, under the county code, our process, we don't have to go to court. We, we can actually post the property for 15 days. We get no notice from the owner. We can go out and, we then work with DPW under a bidding process and we get the problems fixed. IMP has to actually have a court order to have the building removed. So it is a complex system, but the system does work. We just have to go through a whole process to get there. I will add, when you hear our budget, one of our budget is the demolition fund. We usually request $150,000 annually and have been granted that over the years. This year, that, you'll see that that number has increased to $929,000. That's inspections and permits asking for an increase That's inspections and permits asking for an increase because they have a backlog of projects that they want to move forward. So Mr. Wiedermeyer is looking to move some of those projects forward and use the demolition fund. So they may be some of those properties in your communities.
Yes. Do you, I appreciate that information. It's, I think to your point, it is frustrating mostly to the community when no action can be taken because it's not unsafe to the general public. Do, do you know if there are other jurisdictions that take swifter action or are, have more flexibility in doing more or is that?
I don't know. Most of these programs, so the health, Anarundel County Department of Health is one of the few health departments that has a housing program and, and enforces the property maintenance code. In the rest of the state, most of it is done under code enforcements and inspections and permits agencies. So I don't know whether it's easier at some of the other counties.
Appreciate that. Final question.
Sure.
Are we, do we have any kind of tracking system on where the existing homes that have been reported are located in the county and how long it typically takes from the first report for a residential dwelling to fall into an unsafe condition and be removed?
We do not at the Department of Health. I don't know if Andrew and, and Mark over at inspections and permits does. But, you know, we, we do have the nuisance law that was passed a few years ago, Mr. Volkey's law. And we, I know we do have a, a project.
The nuisance.
Because Mr. Volkey had one that was in River Beach that he, he was working with for a very long time and celebrated when it was finally removed. Yes. But, but I don't know if Andrew has a list or not because for the health department, when we finally get finished with what we're doing, we close our complaint because it no longer has a valid complaint. So we only investigate complaints, but we don't track them long-term that way. But when they, I don't know if Andrew does when they become unsafe.
I appreciate that. And there are community members watching this discussion. I told them I would ask these questions for the record, so thank you for that information.
And, yeah, and we hear from all of you, you know, my staff go out to, you know, all your communities because every community has some of these abandoned houses out there. You know, I've recently, you know, Andrew and I met with Ms. Picard and we talked about, wouldn't it be nice to be able to turn some of these properties into affordable housing for some people that are looking to move into these communities instead of them just sitting out here abandoned and can't be used?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Roddian.
Thank you. My next question is about your coordination with AACPS because we, we heard yesterday from the Board of Education and I was sort of getting the impression that they, that there wasn't a coordination or there was something that was ending with the coordination for, between Department of Health and what, you know, in terms of coming on to the school sites or some other thing. But it sounds like actually that's not the case. So I'm trying to figure out what did I misunderstand because it sounds like you are doing, you know, mobile health and I don't know about telehealth, but that was, sorry, I'm just curious, I'm just curious if you could describe or did any of my colleagues hear the same? Or did anyone catch?
Didn't catch none.
Didn't catch, okay.
The only thing.
It's possible I heard wrong, so I just wanted to.
No, I think the only thing that's changed recently in our coordination efforts is probably New Village Academy. We were kind of the conduit between New Village and federally qualified health centers in the county, so introducing them and thinking about that space. And so that has, is that school was not scheduled to open and they, total health for a number of different reasons, but also think the changes in the federal climate had to pull out of that project before the school said they weren't going to open. So that's the only one that I can think of. The telehealth work is still moving forward. There is a expansion for at least one site and I can't remember which school it is for their mobile unit to go on to school property. But I, I can't think of anything that's changed, anything else that may have changed in our coordination efforts with the school system. I'll ask.
Nothing. Okay, so maybe I'll reach back out to the Board of Ed and see what, like, I've missed or maybe I misunderstood or if there's, hopefully it's, you know, hopefully your answer is the right answer. Because I like that. I was really encouraged to hear that that was happening because that seems like a great way to just reach more people. You can come back to me, I have two more.
Ms. Littbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll stay on the school system lane. For the, about 4,000 students that were served by the behavioral health services, do we have available a breakdown of ages or if not specific age, elementary, middle versus high school? I was just curious if there's spikes in certain age groups within our student population. I know you might not have it with you, but if you, if it's available, welcome to send it.
We can absolutely send you what we have. I'll have to talk with Adrian and Sandy, but that's something we can get out to the group to give you an age breakdown or at least a school.
Yeah, a school level if, if specific ages aren't available, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My brief, no, appreciate the, the rodent control. For years, that's always been a, a topic of discussion, going back to two-a-days, trash pickup, had to have that conversations with a number of residents on a regular basis throughout the year. And at some point I'll reach out, I think I sent an email to try to coordinate a POC because there's a couple of groups that wanted to host like a health fair. And I think I did send an email, but then I got a thousand other emails in there, so I got a response. You did reply back and appreciate that, the contact or at least the response back. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask about, I have two more questions, but one of them is about perk tests. So you'd mentioned the shorter perk test season this year. I actually spoke with somebody who is in the community who does perk testing. That's kind of their job. They dig the holes and do all of that. They said there were only 12 days this year that they were actually able to do perk testing and it sounds like one of those days might have been a county holiday or something like that and people were off. So I'm just trying to understand, I heard you say we tried to accommodate people and all that, you did 100 tests. I talked to this person, I think they may have personally been involved in close to 100 tests. But it seems like a really condensed timeframe and from the private sector standpoint, it was concerning to me when I heard that in this very short window, there was a county holiday, there was, it's like, if we're going to compress it this much, we've got to be doing everything we can to give the maximum ability that we can to really allow these tests to happen. So I just didn't know if you could speak to the details on that, kind of provide some context on how it happened this year. I heard you say about the drought and about the limited window and I understand it, but just more detail would be helpful for me to understand this person's comments in light of what we're hearing.
Yeah, so we consistently monitor the water tables and knowing that the season can only start it, but so soon, we don't actually get to control whether or not the water tables are at a place where we can perform those tests. So once they hit that level, then we have more than just the staff who typically work in our well and septic program. We've trained others within the environmental health staff to go out and help so that even if the window is really compressed, that we can get through everyone who sent us a perk test application and respond to that. So even if a holiday fell within that timeframe this year, I believe we were able to serve everyone who had an application in and the end of it is really based on rainfall, right? So we would, of course, if we could get it to go a little bit longer, but then here's something I've learned from Don Kurdiyan and as you see, he knows absolutely everything. But as trees and flowers blossom, they take up more groundwater. So then as the season goes on and the spring hits, our ability to keep it going because the groundwater is being used by the plants changes. And so again, it's very based on the rainfalls and the totals when we're seeing temperatures warming and things blooming. So it is something that they are monitoring every single day to understand, when does it, when are we going to have to cut this off? When can we get it started? And we would have liked to start it sooner because honestly, the compressed schedule is not fun for the staff who are trying to get this work done in a relatively short amount of time. So if we had more time, it actually is at our advantage to have more time. But we have to work with what the weather gives us and the amount of rainfall that we have. Don, anything?
I have an extra perk sent in there.
Yes, next year we'll have an extra perk sent in there.
Just to add what Tommy is saying, we have a network to monitor both, monitor both wet and, and we did not get some of the fall recovery that we want from tropical storms as well as we did get some snow, which is the best way to recharge groundwater. And this is a requirement under our homeowner requirements. And we wait for, we have a range of when we know that those monitor wells are in wet season levels. Normally it's February through April, it's a three-month period. This year it was very condensed. Some counties canceled wet season and didn't do any testing at all. We didn't want to cancel. We also had the ability that like, like Tommy explained, I came up with, we have a lot of historical data. We scan and keep everything that we do on any perk test and every installation of every septic system. And we can use any of that data if we have neighboring properties that need us to look at that historical data to go out and open holes and use comparisons of the same topography to do that. It was a very short period of time. It started on April 16th, that Friday was Good Friday, which was the county holiday. But my staff were, some of my staff did work, they also worked on Saturday. So we did work as much as we could. We had three other people that are trained that are very senior to our department that we had on standby that if we got a backlog list that they were going to go out and do tests. And we never got any requests from them to give it out.
Okay, good. Can I ask a quick follow? This is kind of a weird question coming from me, I understand that. You'd expect probably Ms. Roddian would ask this question because she's more in tune to these issues, but with respect to what we're seeing in terms of climate change, do we anticipate that this is going to be an ongoing problem year to year? Am I right, Ms. Roddian?
Fair.
I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Yes, we do, right? Because as we see tropical storms, as Don mentioned, changing course, hitting different places, as we see less snowfall because, again, what I've learned from Don is snow melts really slowly and then you're able to charge those water tables because it's melting slower than when it rains and being absorbed differently. So as we see the climate change and see less snow and hotter temperatures in the summer and more drought, yes, I think we will continue to see this compression of the season and a number of other issues related to it. But I will allow our historian.
And, and those, those ranges may change because that's, that's something that we look at, you know? So we do statistical reporting and those ranges may change, but we also could get some extremes from climate change as well. So we'll, we'll monitor that and we, we partner, you know, we get our delegation from MDE and these are discussions that we have. You know, we meet with MDE weekly to discuss these types of things with all the environmental health directors across the state. So those are things that we would look at and, and consider when we open and close wet season and if we have to adjust things because of climate change. You know, some of our peninsulas, you have many peninsulas along Mountain Road and Fort Smallwood Road, they're going to be impacted by sea level rise. So we could see just the opposite in those communities where the water tables may rise just by things shifting inward.
Tracking, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Comment and a question. When you get the vaping campaign information together, can you share with us so that we can help share with our constituents?
Sure.
I don't know if you're looking to get folks, young people, to submit applications or what, just anything would be wonderful because I'd be happy to send it out.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it twofold. So there'll be a piece for parents to help them understand what should you be looking for, what do the devices look like? Some of them look like AirPod cases. Like there's a lot of different things that we want parents to be aware of, but then also the goal of this is to have a video that's selected and created by a student that's 15 to 30 seconds that would then be shared out. So we could 100% give you that and please share it as, as broadly as you can.
Perfect, thank you. And then my final question. When we were looking at the mental health numbers, do you know if the numbers are increasing as far as volume and acuity because there's increased mental health challenges happening in the community? Or is it that we have become successful in lowering the stigma of coming forward for help? I don't know if you have any way of gauging that?
I think it's both, right? I think we are really excited to see the conversations happening around mental health and people understanding what they're seeing and that maybe now is a time to reach out for help, that this is something that's happening. But I do think we're seeing for clients in the, at least in the programs that we have, an increased acuity, particularly in young people. And so I think it's a bit of both that we're seeing and it's hard to tie down exactly what is the, which one? I mean, we think even if people didn't know and they've been dealing with these issues, we're glad to see them coming out for help. But the acuity is something that we're keenly aware of, of what are we seeing, in which age groups and who's being impacted. I think that's been important and looking at how much social isolation has to do with that and that increase in acuity over the last five years, but probably starting even earlier than that. But I'll ask my behavioral health colleagues if they have anything they'd like to add to that.
All right. Great. Well, I appreciate that and if there's anything that, you know, I can personally do to push awareness out or any efforts that you all are making, please send it my way.
Ms. Roddian.
Thank you. Back on the topic of school health, you talked about, you know, that we've been able to reduce turnover because, you know, we bumped up the salaries for the school nurses. I was curious, do you have any idea like where we are in terms of vacancies with school nurses and school health assistants?
Yeah, so there's two things happening and I think we've done a really good job of adding nurse recruiters to the workforce for school health specifically. So when we're looking at the number of vacancies and Karen, I know will be able to give me the number off the top of her head because she knows it every single day, they're not open very long because we have anywhere from, I think for nurses now, we're looking at about six days because they're constantly interviewing, hiring, hiring people on as substitutes that want a full-time position that we're able to move over. So really having those recruiters has changed the way that we hire quite a bit. There've always been positions that were continually posted, but having that ability to say, okay, we're going to hire this person in this particular classification and then we're going to move them over and we've got this list. And even things like hiring events, they're consistently hosting hiring events throughout the county, inviting people out. They work a lot with Indeed. They have mailers from the Board of Nursing to really stay on top of all of that. So I'll ask Karen Sisker Krill to come up if she can give us the exact number of vacancies that we have, both for health assistants, LPNs and nurses, to give that a little more context. But we have definitely seen a decrease in nurses and the ability to, to hire much quicker than we have been able to do historically.
Hi, I'm Karen Sisker Krill, the Director of School Health. Thank you. Karen Sisker Krill, Director of School Health. Tony did a great job representing us. She's absolutely right. Currently, we have one school nurse vacancy. She just resigned May 7th, so we'll have it filled shortly. And we have two LPNs, but that's just for a brand new student who has come to us who needs constant respiratory assessment and another child who is first grader just diagnosed with diabetes. So we need a nurse there all the time in the building. Other than that, we just have a few part-timers and that's it. So we, I've started to look at staffing for next year. We're doing really well. Our recruiters have been huge for our program, hats off to them. Our turnover, our fill rate for nurses generally, we fill the position, we're kind of holding the one we have right now because so close to the end of the school year, we'll fill it towards then. It's our average five, six days and we have the vacancy for our RN filled. Now they don't start to orientation till the following month, but that is huge. Health assistants, nine days. I mean, that's huge. So our program is very aggressive with hiring. We've had to because of our turnover, but this year has been really nice and I want to thank you all for doing that. You have helped us greatly with our turnover and provided the benefits that you did. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you step away though, because you might, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask a follow-up question and you might be the person that can answer this most quickly. Can you just tell me, just so I know, the, what the starting salary is for the school health nurses and the school health assistants?
Gosh, you know, that's so funny that you asked me that. I think the school nurse is almost 70,000, it's 69 something. The health assistants are about 27,000, maybe a little over. I know they're $20.96 an hour. The school nurses, I believe, is $44.56 an hour. So that's what their salaries are.
Okay, and are they, are they year-round employees or are they 10 months?
They're 10-month county contractual.
All right, awesome, thank you. Sounds like we're in good shape.
Ms. Littbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is more of a comment than a question. I just wanted to acknowledge, I thought it was wonderful, your recognition of TOPS in your presentation today. My grandmother, who passed last March, was a member of TOPS. It was then a South County chapter for probably about a decade. And when she passed last March, we went through, obviously, her photos and her scrapbooks and everything. And I just wanted to mention a benefit that really struck me when I was going through that, that she got from TOPS besides the weight management benefits was the social and emotional support. It was really evident the relationships were strong and vibrant and such an important part of her life. It was like looking at the secret life of Nana, which was really magical. But at the same time, I just think that when we talk about groups and organizations like TOPS, that, that's one of the, yes, there's the, the, the physical health benefit to the weight loss, but that social and emotional health aspect that being a member of a group that like TOPS provides is really significant. So I just wanted to, I guess, highlight that and say thank you for recognizing a unique organization like TOPS.
Thank you for sharing that with us. We're really excited that that group has been so successful and that our chronic disease and cancer prevention staff have been doing such great work. So excited to highlight anything that they're doing that's making a difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My last question is about the gun violence intervention efforts that you're making. I see you've distributed a lot of the locks, thousands of locks. I thought I saw somewhere, but I can't find it now. Are you changing from locks to safes or is that sort of, are you still just doing locks?
We've added safes to the cadre of things that we offer. So locks, yes, we're still doing them at all of the libraries as well as a number of community-based organizations, pediatricians' offices, our own programs. And we're really targeting parents with the lock boxes. So right now, our Healthy Start program, when they go out, like they've been giving out gun locks, but they're taking the lock boxes with them. The lock boxes are quite a bit more expensive, so we have a lot less of them and we're really trying to target them to families with small children as much as we can. And so expanding that a bit and that is grant-funded through the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and OCAP, but that's where the funding for that is coming from.
Maybe that's where I saw it. Maybe it was the grant fund, something that Mr. Trumpauer sent down. So just understanding this, these, when you say lock boxes, these are actually gun safes?
Correct.
Okay, are they biometric or are they mechanical?
Believe they are mechanical.
Okay, and how many of them have you distributed so far?
I could get that number to you, I don't know off the top of my head.
Is this entirely state-funded or is there any county money going into purchasing the gun lock boxes?
There's no county money going into that at this time.
So is the county just doing the gun locks?
The locks are also through the state funding.
Gotcha.
So both of those have been grant funds that we've received and we've been able to get for multiple years.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Robine.
Okay, oh, hopefully we're almost done. I just wanted to compliment you on the school-based health survey. I feel like I got it in multiple places and I think I am one of the respondents. I'm actually surprised that you didn't have more, so, but I just felt like it was everywhere. I kept getting asked to respond, so, and I did.
We're really glad to hear that.
Yes. And then finally, I just wanted to let you know that I, and I'll probably be following on up with, following up with an email. I met with the Anne Rundle County Chapter of the NAACP Health Committee and they're interested in collaborating with you and finding ways to just make sure that some of the wonderful things that you do. I know you have a ton of outreach already, but they are just looking to, for ways to help expand that, so I'm going to connect to you at some point.
Okay, fantastic, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more lights. A couple of things, I do, I did attend one of the gun violence intervention community meetings and I spoke and heard from and spoke with the group from ROKA and they just sound wonderful. I've seen them out, I think that's a great partnership that will really benefit in that area. I've seen some, on the news, that the federal funding for Narcan is being pulled back. Is, I, I believe we get a lot of ours from state grants, but will that impact how we're able to give out Narcan?
Yes, potentially, because some of the, even what the state is doing and we get our, a lot of our Narcan from the state, so we're able to ask them for, we like X number of boxes or doses. And so if they're, if they are paying for that with federal funds, it's entirely possible. And some of the grant funds that we receive from a federal perspective are specifically for harm reduction. So we're waiting to see what that will mean. And as you mentioned, ROKA, the one reason I didn't touch on them today is some of the federal cuts have also impacted them. And so I'll be sure to update you all with what they're able to continue to do in the county. We're working really closely with them to try to support them as much as we can, but that is a challenge that they're facing as an organization, having that, that funding cut from violence prevention and intervention work has hit a number of organizations that we partner with. And so we'll come back with more, but didn't want to highlight too much if something was going to change in the very near future with the fiscal year. So we'll be sure to keep you all posted, but they are doing fantastic work.
Yeah, those are definitely two programs that have proven positive results and would hate to see those cut back. And also just give a shout-out for, on the online payment system for the food health. I know that was a, a huge undertaking and that's a great thing to have. It's not something that we see, you know, on an everyday basis, but I'm sure that will make many people's lives easier now that it's up and running.
Absolutely, we joke that we're in 2001, so we're really excited about that. Slow, but it has been a, it's been a lot of work to get it up and running, so I, we, we joke about that, but it is a long time coming and we hope that it makes it a lot easier for restaurant owners.
Well, thank you for everything y'all do. It really is amazing, the wide range of things that you cover and help to make our county healthier and safer. So is there any other business to be brought before the Board of Health? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Motion carries. The Anne Rundle County Board of Health is adjourned until October. And now, the May 13th, 2025 meeting of the Anne Rundle County Council is called to order. Please ensure all electronic devices remain in silent mode. We will now continue with the Department budget presentations and we will begin with the Department of Health.
Yep, you're not done with me yet. I don't remember this part.
Oh, yeah.
Good, how are you? It's mostly Marika and I. I mean, you want to say it's finance.
I'll sit right back here and wait for any questions.
Marika Tony Show. This slideshow is much shorter than the last one, but we will jump right in. And Marika, have you had an opportunity, do you want to kick it off? All right, just a little bit and we, we touched on some of this and so I will try to be as brief as I can. We're looking at a nine-point, or 97.4 million dollar budget, looking at a 4.3 million dollar or a 4.6% increase over FY '25. About 65% of that is county-funded and we looked at the pie chart in the previous presentation of the breakdown between opioid abatement funds, as well as about 34% of that is proposed grant funding. And that does include, I know the Budget Office categorizes it as a grant, but the core funding that we receive through the state, it is not a grant because we don't have to apply for it, they are obligated to give it to us, it's just how we are categorizing it here. And then the primary reason for increases are a couple of things, increases in state and county salaries, but also looking at programs that have been in existence since the federal funding. So a lot of our larger asks this year are related to things like the Gun Violence Intervention Program, the Healthy Communities Program, our Community Health Ambassadors and some of the school work that we talked about. So as you, as we go through this, you will see exactly what we're looking at. So what we're looking at in the proposed operating budget for the Community Health Ambassadors is $575,000 of general funds, Healthy Communities, looking at $694,000. Violence Interruption is broken up into a few different pieces. So this is $965,000, but a piece of this is for the Eastport community, so that's roughly a little over $450,000 to continue that program. Another piece of this is looking to expand to support the Man Up Program that's happening in West County. So they've been able to do really great work, but their state funding was cut earlier last year, so they had to lay off about four to five staff members, decreasing the amount of violence interruption that they could do in that area. So looking to continue that work with that organization, as well as this includes some support for the Health Department, so there is a staff position here and that staff member is already on board. There are two full-time staff members that work with our Gun Violence Intervention Team. One of the positions is here, as well as ongoing support for things like the Cure Violence Global Database that we use, their technical assistance. And so there's a few different things listed here. We talked in the previous presentation about the school health assistant salaries, so this honestly is about, it's a little more than a dollar raise for those individuals, but trying to get to a place where we are getting more competitive because we will have to hire experienced folks and do not have the ability to train them from novice to getting their certification. And then as the Kerwin schools expand, this is our request to staff those schools and their health rooms. And you'll see here that there is a decrease based on the net that will come in. And what that means is that for our partnership with the school system, the Kerwin School nurses work more hours than the nurses in other schools. They also have a slightly higher salary and the community schools pay that difference to the Health Department. So we pay the amount that we would pay for any other nurse in any school and anything above and beyond that, the school system pays. And so that's what you're seeing when you look at what's general funds, because technically from the county, it's going from one, they're giving it to the school system, the school system is technically paying it back to the Health Department and so just acknowledging that difference here. Updating dental equipment, so these are x-ray machines that are now too old to continue to be serviced and don't work with our electronic health records anymore, and so we need to replace those, as well as IT upgrades for environmental health. And this includes scanning records in that are currently on microfiche and that we don't want to lose those records for different properties and so having someone actually come in and do some of that work. And then a medical billing manager. So this is something, we're looking at how to optimize the billing within the Health Department and this year we will be working with a consultant to do that. Actually, they should be starting with us in the next two months, but then after that, figuring out what sort of staffing we need to actually hire for FY '26 to make sure that we are maximizing our billing. And then what's left is Juul smoking cessation, so this is coming out of general funds, but this is the Juul funds for vaping, so these are restitution funds, as well as recovery housing support. And when we talked about the families, this is supporting those, the work that we do with recovery housing. And that comes out of the opioid abatement fund. And then the last two requests are dollars that come to the Health Department to go to the Mental Health Agency, so crisis response services, as well as salary adjustments for the Mental Health Agency staff. And then we talked a bit about some of these, at least for the demo building code and why that has increased and that backlog for IMPs, I'm starting from the bottom and working my way up, as well as capital projects for failed sewage and private well funds. So this allows for us to help residents who have a failing septic tank to get those things improved and we have seen an increase in the cost of those materials, as well as septic system enhancements. Those are our capital requests and that's it for me. Got anything for you? No, okay, wonderful work.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at last year's presentation for FY '25 and believe in that budget, we gave $912,800 in general funds for the Healthy Communities Program. And this year, the request is $694,500. Is that an additional 694 or is that you're asking for less money than you asked for last year?
We're asking for less money than we asked for last year. So understanding the budgetary constraints of this year, working with the Budget Office and working with that program to really understand what can we cut out of the budget? And most of what's been cut out of there is materials and things that we hope we can either fund via one time or we will start to decrease the number of rapid test kits that are given out in the community, things like that, that we are cutting out of the budget to kind of right-size and make sure that we are still able to provide those mobile services, increased number of hours at the sites. But this year, we went five days at all sites, so Magathie, Parole and Glenberne, we were able to do five days a week, but we saw that not each site, that each site did not have the same level of demand every day. So kind of saying, okay, how many days can we offer there? So that is what you're seeing reflected, it is a lower ask this year than last year.
Okay, and it looks like the same is true for the Community Health Ambassador Program because last year that was 720 and this year it's 575. And it looks like, but for the Violence Interruption Program, that's up. Last year you asked for 582.5, this year you're asking for 875.3 in general funds, then you got video lottery money in there. So I guess it seems like maybe you're sort of shifting from the other two programs and you're putting the resources into the Violence Interruption Program. Is that a fair characterization or is there something else happening?
No, I wouldn't say so. I would say that for the other two programs, really looking at, so with the Healthy Communities Program that is fully staffed and operated by the Health Department, so we're able to really say, okay, what do we need? What do we have other sources that we can pay for different items from? And what changes can we make? For the Community Health Ambassador's Program, this is one where we're funding other organizations, so looking at, okay, how much are people spending? Is there any way that we can maybe eliminate some funding, but hopefully not really cut into the meat of what they're doing? But also, we've started to apply for grant funds to make up the difference for the Healthy Communities Program, as well as the Community Health Ambassador. So those are things that we're looking at. And then for Violence Interruption, it really was an expansion of an additional site. So it wasn't that we're taking, you know, that last year's request was supporting the internal workings for the Health Department, as well as one site in Eastport. This is the expansion into an additional site. So I think it's, I wouldn't say we're taking from one to give to another necessarily and that funding is something that would go out into the, into the organizations that are doing that work.
Other people have questions, Madam Chair, I'm happy to wait.
Thank you. My questions also tie into the Violence Interruption and, well, technically it could be stretched across. As the Health Department partners with community organizations and we're passing general funds on to a nonprofit, or how do we know that the work, how, how do we know that the accountability is there? Is it, do we wait till the end of the year and get a report or is there a partnership going on that's ongoing? If you could speak to that, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, so we do that in a variety of ways depending on the grant funds and what we're doing, but I'll speak specifically to the Violence Interruption Program. So the staff member that I mentioned for the Health Department that supports this is attending a weekly meeting with that team. So she sits in on their weekly team meeting to understand what their challenges are, as well as the fact that we use the Cure Violence Global Database and they are required to put information on what they're doing into that database every day and the Health Department has full access to that. So we meet with their leadership every other week to talk about, this is what we're seeing in the database, if we see any particular person who like, hey, such and such isn't putting in their after-action reports. We can get down to that level of detail and ask that leadership. And I have a, we were doing it monthly, we've moved it to quarterly for the beginning of this year, a meeting with the program manager, as well as the program supervisor, where I'm asking about any high-level challenges that they have. So we, it is a real partnership. We meet and talk with them on a really regular basis, more than weekly, I would say, while we have weekly things set up. We're in constant conversation about what's in your budget, what are you spending it on, approving things and understanding what they're doing on the ground and the programming that they're offering to both participants of the program and the broader community. So it's, it's quite a bit of collaboration and, and ongoing communication at a variety of levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the private well fund, is that a fund that allows the county to pay for drilling of wells on private property?
I believe it will allow for us to pay for drilling. I will double-check that, but it should.
And which category would that fall under in the budget book? Do we know how many private wells that the county drills annually?
I can ask that question. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is I, during the comprehensive zoning process, became aware of an area of our county that the county is drilling wells on private property because of containment, excuse me, containment in the well water in close proximity to county property. So I'm just interested in if we're starting to see an increase because of the age of the county property in contaminated wells and what the county is preparing down the road if, if we are seeing an increase here this year.
I will get that information back to you.
Mr. Volkey.
I think I answered my own question, thank you.
Okay.
Those are my favorite type.
So this is kind of an accounting question. So I'm looking at your capital projects, which are septic, failed sewage and wells and the demo buildings, those are all listed as capital projects. Why wouldn't that be under your operating budget? Because that's something y'all do as operations, is to maintain and follow these, it's not really that y'all are building out your facilities. I'm just...
That is an excellent question that I have never asked. And it's been this way since I joined the department, which is never my favorite answer. People are like, oh, I know. But I really could not tell you why. They're separated. And some of it may be that it's not, like, for the capital, for the demo building code, it's not just the health department that is using those funds. IMP is also using those funds for demolition.
So maybe they're shared across the...
There's demolition and coordination of projects and things of that nature.
Because it does seem like that's just part of your general operations that fall under you. It's not like a, when we think capital, we think of constructing something or something.
I will ask that question. And unfortunately, Bo left. But I'm sure whenever it happened over his 40-year term with us, he could tell me.
He would know why.
And tell us.
All right. Are there any other questions for the health department this morning? We've, we've had you here, kept you here a long time. So y'all can go. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. So, all right. Next up is animal services.
Correct.
We want working septic systems.
I'm so, you know, we're gonna stick with that.
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
I have to think it was IMP.
Sure.
Hey, I've got some of mine too.
And we all have rats.
You know. All right.
Please go right ahead, Ms. Rol.
Thank you. I'll jump right in. This presentation is for animal services, the Department of Animal Services for FY26. A new county department, amicably separate from the police department. Our mission statement will really remain the same, and our core functions will remain the same. What I put here is a snapshot of what we do. And it's a lot. We house a lot of animals that come in for various reasons. Our adoptions program, volunteer, we have over 100 volunteers and more than 100 foster families as well. We observe and assess behavior of our animals. Of course, code enforcement and public safety is a big chunk of what we do. We offer vaccine and microchip clinics on a regular basis at our facility. We do the animal and professional licensing for animal-related businesses. We're doing as many public events as we can. Those are usually adoption events related, related to adoption somehow. We also, I think a lot of people don't know this, we offer euthanasia services to the public. Very often, people, the vet bills get very high, and it's time for owners to make the tough decision for their pet. And I, we take pride in the fact that we can be there for that reason. It's at a very, very low cost for pet owners. This is our org chart for FY26. There are some additional positions in here. And that's really what I'm going to focus on are the additional positions in this budget. Oh, I'm sorry, Bo, would you like to?
Sure. So I just want to comment there. FY26 proposed budget can be found on page 279 of the proposed budget book. So I'm going to turn over back to Claudia.
Okay. I'll take it right back. All right. The first, the new positions I'm going to focus on first are part of the reorganization of animal care and control to animal services. The first being the director for the department, providing leadership and vision, setting high priority, high priorities, and making strategic decisions. So this position does directly relate to the creation of the new department, as does management assistant two. As we were meeting and talking about establishing a new department, boy, the police department does a lot for us right now. And two of those big areas are IT and personnel. So this is a management assistant two to take over those duties, again, directly relating to creating a new department. Animal Services Deputy Director, this is net neutral fiscally. This is a reclassification of the administrator position to a deputy director. That person will oversee our core areas of field services, animal care and customer service, lead some of our big projects, which is sort of a hole we have right now, is having people to really focus in on some changes. Okay. The net, the positions I'm going to talk about now are not related to becoming a new department. When I started about nine and a half months ago, I identified some gaps. The positions that we're going to go into now were recommended back in late 2024, before we really knew, we were moving in this new department direction. The first is another, is a animal control technician. It's another, it's a skilled vet tech. One thing we strive to do is move animals through our system as soon as, as quick as possible, but not too quick. One of those, one of the things we need to do is spay and neuter. So we don't want a backlog in spay-neuter. We don't want animals to wait two, three, four extra days because they're waiting for surgery. Having skilled vet techs is, is a key to that, to that high-volume, high-quality spay-neuter. Also, I want to note, we now have, thanks to the Friends of the Shelter Organization, we now have dental equipment. We're doing dentals in-house instead of sending them out to other vets in the community. And the Friends group has also, we don't have it yet, but we will have full x-ray capability soon. So again, adding to that medical team is going to be key. The management aide position is someone to lead our adoptions program. When you go into most shelters and you want to adopt an animal, you are usually paired with an adoption counselor. We don't have any adoption counselors. As much as our front desk staff strives to, you know, provide, provide as much information as possible, have those conversations, the line builds up. So can one person do all the adoption counseling? No. But that person could identify certain animals, maybe a dog that does have some issues and is going to need a little extra work. Maybe that dog is flagged to have a counseling session with, with our adoptions manager, is what I call it. Hopefully, this will lower our adoption returns. We'll be able to do adoption follow-ups with adopters. Animal Care Attendant. When we run the numbers on minimal care standards with organizations like the ASPCA, National Organization Based Out of New York, and the National Animal Control Association, there, there is, there's an equation. You can run the numbers. We're at least two people short on our animal care team. And to give a snapshot of the impact of that, on Sundays, we have two people that come in, in the morning, and do the very, they feed, they clean, they do the very basics in the morning. And then later in the day on Sunday, somebody else comes in on overtime, usually an animal control officer, and does the PM feedings. Those Sundays aren't, that's not right. So that, also on Sundays, that means volunteers can't be there, getting the dogs out and, and socializing with the cats if staff aren't there. So this position helps to fill Sundays broader coverage across the board so that staff, animal care staff can get to other things like medicated baths, getting some dogs out for some specific behavior work. There's a lot to be done. This is separate from the reclassification of the Animal Care Attendant, one, with inspection and permits. Office Support Specialist, this is a position that is needed administratively to help the Public Safety Office communicate with victims of, of bites, coordinate with the health department. There's a lot to be done with animal bites. There are almost 1,300 bite reports a year, and there is a lot to be done. This position will also help maximize an animal control officer's time to be able to be out in the field and less tied to a desk. Thank you.
And...
Do you want to add to?
Well, Ms. Rol, first, would you introduce yourself and the rest of the team?
I'm so sorry. Claudia Rol, I'm the administrator at Animal Care and Control. Hannah Dower, deputy...
Deputy Chief Officer. Hannah Dower.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that I understand the five different positions being added. In the summary on page 281, it says, one animal care attendant, one animal control technician, one management aide, one management assistant two, and one office support specialist. But then when we were listening to the new positions from Ms. Rol, I think I counted more than that. Director, management assistant, control technician, adoption manager, animal care attendant, and office support specialist. Maybe there's some reclassification in there and terminology adjustments. So I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah. So I think I had to kind of go through all of this myself. And I think it, there's just a lot of moving parts. One of the, and I forget the exact description that you read off earlier, it maybe doesn't include the executive director, which is an exempt position, not a classified position. So if you add that in, there are six new positions, one neutral reclassification. Is that, Bo, do I have that right?
And there's a transfer.
And the one transferred position from IMP that was a reversal of a move made last year.
Okay. I think the director is what, and that's exempt. So that was the six that I was counting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm having more math difficulties than that. So your department is gaining 40 employees. That's what the budget book says, 40 positions. 28 reduced from the police department, one reduction from inspections and permits. So when I'm looking at that, that's 29, which suggests to me there's a net increase of 11 positions, unless there's somewhere else in the county service that you're pulling more people that I'm not seeing.
So, do you want to go ahead, Bo?
Yeah. This is Bo Zhao from the Budget Office. So actually, there are a total of 34 positions transferred from the police department, as shown on the budget book, page 281.
And so if you go to page, I guess it's 283 and 284, I have a hole through one of the numbers. But that lists, it's a total of 41 positions. That includes all of the transferred positions plus the six new positions. So it's 41.
So you're bringing 34 from police, one over from inspections and permits, and then the delta of six is the new positions that you're adding?
Right.
Okay. My next question. So it doesn't look like anybody's budget is going down, right? The police department's budget is not going down. The inspections and permits department budget is not going down. And your budget is going up to nearly, I think, $5 million. So I'm again struggling with this reorganization, reclassification, and how this is going to be a savings, or this is going to be more effective, or how this is going to work, because I'm not seeing the savings. You can speak to that?
Sure. So I don't think we have ever presented this as a cost-savings initiative.
Okay.
If you, the budget book, the level of detail in the budget book and the ABO is at a level that you can't really see, within the whole police department, you can't see the individual line items for animal care and control. But if we were to provide that level of detail to you all by business unit, then you would see the two business units associated with animal care and control zeroed out in fiscal '26 and moved, shifted over to this new department. So the police department is obviously much broader. They have a much broader mission, which is part of the reason that we have proposed creating this new department. And so for that reason, I think the, the budget for animal care and control is at a level that it is hidden by all of the other funding for other services that the police department delivers.
I want to add a little bit on that. So actually, the budget book, if you look at the police department budget book, admin services, that's on page 291. So the personal services is showing a decrease in the budget. $1.9 million, $1.98 million. So that is partially because of the transfer of the 34 animal care and control positions.
Okay. Can you just get us the detail that you talked about on the police department and the zeroing out of those different business units?
Sure.
Thank you.
And, yes. And I'm looking on page 294 of the budget book at the police department's, and it does say a net reduction of 28 positions on there, which would work.
Well, that is, again, Bo Zhao from the Budget Office. So the 29, 28, that delta is because of the 36, 34 transferred position out of the police department, and then the police is adding six positions.
Exactly. Yes, that, that works out.
That's the delta.
Okay. All right.
Just a minute. And Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staying in the same train of thought, in the police department's contractual services, supplies and materials, capital outlay, they, there's also reductions there. Could you guys parse out to us, what of that was animal control?
So I'll, while Bo, I don't know if he has it available right at this moment, but when we provide the business unit level detail, we can definitely identify by object for those two business units, what it was for last, for this current year, fiscal '25, and what's being zeroed out as it shifts over to the department.
Appreciate. I mean, this is a big change for the county. So seeing that level of detail, I think is important.
Sure.
So that, we're also told that y'all expect some transition costs that aren't reflected in this, like taking the police department name off of things. Do we have an estimate what we think that's going to cost for those?
I do have an estimate. I can get that to you. I don't have it with me today. I can get an estimate to you for the vehicles.
Okay.
There is some pretty nominal cost to order new patches for officers. So what we're focusing on right now, it's not a full rebrand. We're focusing on pulling the police department off vehicles and uniforms.
Okay.
And I believe what we've discussed is that Claudia's identified some savings in the current year that should bill 2525 pass. She can go ahead and start ordering the patches for jackets and the new decals for vans or whatever it is, to get that done in fiscal '25.
Yes.
Any other questions for animal welfare at this time? Okay. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we're going to have a little shift in order and have the Office of Emergency Management. Next, we're going to have a little shift in order and have the Office of Emergency Management.
My name is Pretty Emmerich, Director of the Anorindel County Office of Emergency Management, and I'll have the others introduce themselves.
Good morning, my name is Joe Corona, I am the Deputy Director of the Office of Emergency Management.
And good morning, my name is Marika Hannan with the Office of the Budget.
So I do have a presentation, doesn't involve cute animals like animal control, but I'm sure this will explain the good work that we have done in the Office of Emergency Management and offering some answers to whatever questions you might have. So our, in the budget book, our budget is on page 316. So I provided a snapshot of the 2026 proposed budget, and Marika, I don't know if you wanted to add anything in terms of this budget page. So this is our current organizational chart. As you can see, we are a mix of county and grant funded. Some of our positions are partially grant funded, some are fully grant funded. Obviously, in emergency management, we do rely on federal grant funding. That has been historically the way that our budget has been combined with the county funded. And I know there are some questions about, you know, what does the future look like with federal grant funding? That is still to be determined as we go through some of the changes with FEMA and what the administration has for grant funding. I wanted to go through our annual report to talk about, a little bit about what we do. This is our third annual report, and we're very proud that we have started to do this in order to catalog what we have done and especially some of the data on why we're perhaps asking for some of these supplemental asks that you will see in the budget book. So our annual report, we are divided into four units. There's operation and planning, training and exercise, communications and outreach, and special projects. Especially with operations and planning, we have had a busy year with unusual events such as the Key Bridge collapse. But also, special events permitting process, which we presented, I think, two years ago, has expanded. We meet on a weekly basis to discuss the special events that are in Anorindel County, and what has turned into a seasonal work group has continued all year round. Special events happen, again, all year round, and there's no rest in terms of preparing for what may come. One of our supplemental requests is a special events coordinator to not only help coordinate among the county agencies, not only public safety and health and human services in terms of special events planning, but to work with the organizations. Special events can be complicated, there's a lot of work that goes into it, there's a lot of other permits, and we want to make sure that the organizations have an understanding of what it takes to have a safe event in Anorindel County. And as I had presented a couple of years ago, in terms of special events permitting, we are always committed to working with the organizers, and we still hold true to that, and this special events coordinator position would help in that. For training and exercise, we have increased our trainings and exercises, especially for our emergency operations center representatives. Right now, these stats are just a tiny bit outdated, but we're up to over 80% in county agencies and emergency operations center representatives who are trained. That is the highest we've ever had. So we are continuing to increase that by continuously offering training and exercises. This past year, we had our first full-scale exercise involving multiple county agencies in five different locations. It was a great success, it's not something that a local jurisdiction normally puts on, but we did that because we are committed to making sure that the county agencies understand what to do in a disaster and large-scale incident. And the only way to do that is to practice what we have in our plans. And so having that first full-scale exercise for us was a lot of lessons learned that we are continuously building upon. Communications and outreach, we pride ourselves in providing presentations and trainings to the community, because not only should county agencies be prepared, but our communities should be prepared for what might happen. And especially, our most popular ones are CPR and Stop the Bleed, and we go to a lot of community members, HOAs, anybody who wants these trainings, you want to make sure that they're trained. And then lastly, special projects. This is where especially our grant projects fall in, working with other county agencies, especially police and fire, to make sure that they can get the equipment they need with our grant funding. But these are also ways that we can really expand what emergency management does and to have new ideals, not only in our outreach to the community, but to what the community might need. One of the things we have been involved in is making sure that the field of emergency management, not only at the local level, but at the state level, is prepared for whatever changes might be coming from the federal level and strengthening our programs locally and statewide. Moving on to our capital improvement project, again, something we have talked about, the Joint 911 EOC Center, the consolidation of 911 operations under the Office of Emergency Management. And we are currently, well, we completed the schematic design phase, and we're in the design development phase. Not only are we planning for the new building, but obviously for the new organizational structure. It's going to be a transition. I heard Animal Care and Control talking about how they're doing it. It's going to be a similar path in terms of making sure that we provide the best services to Anorindel County by consolidating the 911 operations. Going along the steps of the design development phase, we did have our first public meeting with the surrounding communities to tell them about the project, obviously the importance of the project, and to make sure that we heard their input. Schematic design, what I also wanted to emphasize is we're working within our budget to make sure that we have the best building for this consolidation. It has been a great partnership with DPW, with police and fire, because we understand the importance of this consolidation, and we want to make it happen, not only with the building, but actually with the organizational consolidation. So I just wanted to highlight some of the ways we're working within the budget that we have in terms of overall building design, you know, working with a reduction of square footage, little things like the raised flooring, deferring the installation of the traffic light to Phase Two, things, again, that we are working well together, we are making sure that we get the best that we can within our budget and moving forward, because, again, we understand the importance of this. Again, our first community meeting was in December 2024, because we can't possibly do this without the input of the community and to have them understand why this is important. This is the first of many, many public meetings in order to move forward so that with each phase that we are in the design and the consolidation, we are making sure that the community is updated. Part of this process with the second supplemental request is for a deputy director for emergency communications. So we talked about the building, we have to make sure that the organizational consolidation is done right. And the first process is having OEM with that deputy director to oversee a lot of the consolidation of the policies, strategic vision, operational coordination with police and fire as we get closer to the opening of the building. What we don't want to happen is have a new building open and then, oh, wait a minute, we forgot all the rest of the stuff that needs to happen. So the strategic vision, the operational policies, that has to happen before the opening of the building. And that is, we want to do this right. So that's part of the second supplemental request for that deputy director position. Design concept of what the building would look like, it's going to be great working space for the consolidation. As you know, with the current fire and police PSAP, they have outgrown their space. This gives them the space that they deserve for the great services that they provide to the residents of Anorindel County, and the consolidation would really focus, not only, obviously, on emergency management, but making sure that we elevate 911 operations and being the first first responders, as I like to call them. This is great in terms of making sure that they grow as the county grows. That is all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Pretty. Thank you for coming down. So looking at the budget book, real quick, a couple of questions. You guys, looks like you had the biggest drop from, I guess, fiscal year '25 and now proposed '26 at $1.6 million. Is there, are those going to impact you in any way in providing the services that you currently do? Is that mainly federal dollars that has decreased from one cycle to the next? But percentage-wise, you probably have the largest percentage reduction of any of the agencies I've seen who've come in here and looking at, just based off of percentage.
So that's the fluctuation in grants that normally happens between the operating budget years. So that, you know, when we, and I could talk a little bit about what's coming up federally for our grants. The NOFO for FY '25 is set to be released for, federal year '25 is set to be released May 14th, May 15th. So we'll have a better idea of what kind of grant money is coming for the, for the upcoming grant cycle.
And then last thing, just a comment. Unfortunately, you're the, you're the insurance protection we have when it comes to natural disaster or anything like that, so it is very wise of any organization or government to have an OEM in place. Our, the institution I work for, for me, obviously has similar capabilities, and so it is certainly a wise investment and worth every single penny, so.
Thank you.
Crazy stuff happens, and you need a sort of center of mass where coordination can take place and leadership can consolidate there to actually manage these crises, and so it is worth every penny. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I look at it a little bit differently when I'm looking at the budget book.
Sure.
So the general fund expenditures for your department are going up 27% this year. They're going up from $1.44 or $1.45 million to $1.8 and some change. So that's a pretty significant increase, and I think a lot of that is attributable to the person that you indicated who's going to do some special events stuff. You have one vacancy now, so I guess you're kind of in a position already where you've got a vacancy in your department, and now you're asking for another position. I also went back and pulled up the fiscal note for Bill 1323, which was the special events bill, and I was enjoying reading the fiscal impact from February 2023 when Mr. Trumbauer said, "This legislation is anticipated to have an operational impact on the following departments, police, fire, and inspections and permits." It never mentioned your office. "It's possible these departments may need additional resources to implement this program." That's what you're coming to ask for. "The operational impact will depend upon the number of special events captured in the new process. Based on data provided over the last year from fire and police departments, this legislation could generate additional $100,000 to $150,000 of annual revenue through application fees and special service charges." And then it goes on to say, "It'll depend on how many waivers are granted and what the scope is." So I guess what's interesting to me is, when we were presented this bill two years ago, it was presented as, this could actually raise revenue for the county. And instead, what I'm hearing is, any revenue raised sounds like it's going to be offset by this new position in your department. So I'm just kind of commenting on that more generally for my colleagues to appreciate what may or may not be put in some of these fiscal notes. I just emailed Mr. Trumbauer about the fiscal note on Bill 2525 as well, which seems to be not accurate based on what we've heard in budget, too. So with that, I guess what I would like to hear from you is, justify to me this 27% increase, why we need this special events person, why we're adding all of this in light of what appeared to have been a way to do this that didn't even include your department when we passed that bill two years ago.
So let me address the vacant position first. So that is the PIO, Community Outreach Coordinator, would not have anything to do with special events, and we're currently hiring for that, so that vacancy will be filled. Second, the special events position is a 1,500-hour position, so I don't, I don't think it counts for all the increase you're seeing, I'm not sure, you could pinpoint it to that one position. So we're also, we also are being fiscally conservative. I'm not asking for a full-time position on this. I understand the 1,500-hour, I think, is, is good to help with the coordination of the special events. Now, I can't comment on the fiscal note on the special events bill, but the way it has transpired in the past two years is that there is a lot of coordination needed that has fallen upon the Office of Emergency Management, and so we are happy to take that on in terms of the coordination to better the safety of special events in this county.
Madam Chair, may I since?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trum, our budget officer, and while Ms. Emmerich can't comment on the fiscal note, I certainly can, because I signed it, Mr. Volkey, and at that time, it was accurate, and at this time, it is also accurate. So all those things you read are true. What happened between that point two years ago and now, as Ms. Emmerich referenced, is the county did a lot of coordination and decided, hey, this position, instead of multiple people in fire and police and everywhere else kind of doing it, we needed a coordination. And so those costs and projected costs that I referenced in the fiscal note are now being consolidated in this position. So I think that, at that time, it was accurate. What happened is, we made a strategic change in how we were going to implement this. There is an amount of revenue that's coming in, I don't have that offhand, we can certainly get that for you, but in your comments, you framed it as inaccurate, which I would take offense to. And then I did receive your email from a couple moments ago claiming another fiscal note was inaccurate, which I will respond to you and explain why you were incorrect in that characterization again. So I can do this all day, but we can talk about the numbers and we can talk about the strategy, but I wanted to correct the record on that, so thank you.
Yes, Mr. Volkey.
May I? Thank you.
You may.
So Mr. Trumbauer, let me ask you this question. If there is all this coordination, and if all these departments are coming together, why are we not seeing savings? Or are we seeing savings? Is it your position that this is costing less money, or is this coordination costing more money? That's what I'm not clear about. Like, bottom line, is this helping the county taxpayer to save money, or is this costing the county taxpayer more money?
Chris Trum, our budget officer, are you asking if the specific request in OEM is going to save the taxpayer money?
I guess. What you're saying is, fire, police, inspections and permits, they were all sort of duplicating efforts. So we, as a county, made a strategic decision to try to coordinate all of that so that we could streamline this process, make it more efficient. That's what I think you're saying.
It is.
And so my question is, with all of that, is it saving money, or is it costing more money? That's all I want to know.
I would ask Ms. Emmerich to speak to the specific duties, but I will say, there's a, there's a difference between coordinating and becoming more efficient and saving money versus what would be done whether, if that wasn't accomplished, versus is hiring this position a net negative fiscal impact, meaning will you save as much money as the cost of this position? So I'm not sure which of the two you're asking for, but operationally, I would ask Ms. Emmerich to explain.
Sure. All of this position.
So this position would certainly help other agencies in terms of carrying out their roles and responsibilities in the special event permitting process. I'll give an example for police in terms of the resources they are devoting to this. This public safety-focused position could certainly help in terms of what they do for planning for special events.
Understood. I guess, and I think Mr. Trumbauer is correct when he characterizes it as potentially two questions, right? Is there a cost savings? And then is the revenue being generated a net neutral in terms of whatever the cost is? Those are two separate questions, and I think that's fair to bifurcate them. I'll stick with the first question. Is this a cost savings? Take out whatever the fees are for special events and whether it's net neutral or not, is this level of coordination and streamlining making this process more efficient, therefore using resources in these other departments more efficiently?
Yes.
Okay. So it is your position that this is saving us money. How is it saving us money in these other departments? Can we quantify how much?
I think that is something that, once we get the position, can be quantified.
Okay, so we need to appropriate the money, you all need to have it, you all need to be able to spend it, and then after the fact, you can come back and tell us whether it was a good use of money or not.
No, it's going to be a good use of money. So I think in terms of assisting the other agencies and their roles and responsibilities, you have to understand with the special event permitting process, it's assigned to positions that have other responsibilities as well. So if you're looking at a cost-saving, operational beneficial savings, this will help in terms of making sure that, yes, this is an added responsibilities, so let's make sure to put it in a position so the other agencies can focus on their work.
I understand, but for years, this was done through the police department before Bill 1323. So this was already something that was built into the cake, if you will, of how the county police department functioned and operated. This administration came in and said, "We want to pull this out and do this in a different way," hence the reason for Bill 1323, and it was identified that it was going to move through police, fire, and inspections and permits. Now it's expanded to including your office, too, and so what I'm trying to understand is how all of this, working together, is potentially saving money or being more efficient, taking the net neutral cost of whatever you're raising in terms of the fees to the side. Separate question. And I still don't feel like I have an answer to that.
So I think the assumption that police have always done it the same way without the special event permit is not accurate. So we've always planned for special events, yes, but this permitting process was to make sure that we do understand the events that are happening in Anorindel County and that we could properly prepare for that. That element was missed. That element was missing from what was previously held. So yes, so police responded in terms of having the security, making sure that it was safe. But a lot of the understanding of what events actually take place in Anarundel County was not there. So with the special event permitting process, we have a better understanding. There is an increase in these events because now we understand, know about it, and new events are coming into the county because of the process and the way we work with the organizers.
Yeah. I, I think the process was, was completed, but not in a very effective manner. And I think it was siloed amongst a lot of different agencies that are part of this process. And now with the coordination, this makes it a lot easier for us to, to know what's going on within the county. And because of that, we're aware of a lot more events than we have been in the past that would meet that threshold of, of special events permitting. And we're able to create and walk residents and walk the special, the special event coordinators through that process in a way we haven't been able to do before.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, just to add some context to this bigger conversation, rather than just focusing on spreadsheets and numbers, we just saw a propane explosion at, at the Laurel City Main Street Festival. We have, you know, our job in county government is, is to keep, one of the jobs is to keep our community safe. So I appreciate the lessons learned and, and the coordination. And I, I, I really like coordination so that we're not siloed, so that we don't miss something. Because the world is a very different place than it was maybe 30 years ago or when this county government was formed. And we're seeing vehicles run down, people in, in festivals all over this country regularly. There's all kinds of things happening that we need to be prepared for and our agencies all need to understand what's happening in the county. I was at, I, my calendar had six events on it on Saturday. I only got to three because I talked too much. So I understand the need for coordination. I just wanted to highlight that, that our job is not always just about a cost savings. It's about keeping people safe. So thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there's an interest in understanding the flow of this new position. Is that something I don't expect you to sit here and explain exactly what's going to transpire when this position, if this position is filled? Can you send us a flow chart of what this position will do with regard to communication between the county departments? What responsibilities it, this position may be taking off of someone else's plate? I understand that there's not going to be an entire removal of responsibilities from departments because there's still going to be someone in the police department and someone in the fire department that still has to participate in the event, the special events permitting process. But just some kind of flow chart so that we can understand what coordination this position will be doing and helping with the two departments, the two major departments that are at play here.
We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on the new 911 center. When you talk about this is going to be this complete reorganization, will the 911 center, will those employees remain under police and fire or will they now be under OEM?
They'll be under OEM.
Okay. Interesting. So, but that will be coming down the road. So that's going to be part of this new position.
Yes.
Visioning is creating that. Okay. All right. Are there any further questions, Mr. Volkey?
Yes, but no.
All right. Thank y'all very much. I understand you're headed to a bill signing.
Yes, I am.
So.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my public safety partners for letting me go first.
Yes. And public safety, I know y'all have been sitting a while. Can y'all give us a few minute break? We've been sitting here for many hours and I think everybody needs to stand up and take a quick break. We'll be right back.
You can find the fire department's budget on page 296 of your proposed budget book. And I will turn it over to the chief for her presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Tricia Wolford. I'm the Anarundel County Fire Chief. I will introduce the team we have with me. Darlene Flynn, our Budget Analyst, Deputy Chief Tom Young, who oversees the budget. And then also we have with us Division Chief Mike Falskraft. About five or six slides for capital and operating, and we'll move right through them and then we'll be available for any questions. A little bit of an overview, I'm grateful that I have great working relationships with all of you and you know our fire department very well. There's just a couple of standout items I'll say on here. The who we are, we're about 1,500 operating in the field, depending on the day and time. So we are a large combination department of career and volunteer. Also, if you look on the bottom, the dispatch, fire, and EMS calls, just approaching 100,000 incidents per year, which is a lot of calls. And then as you can see down there, we're transporting quite a bit of patients. So we are seeing a very good split of medical, fire, and other types of calls. Here are the changes for the operating budget and we'll run through each one of these with a slide. Just to go through them very quickly, it's a permanent staffing for our recruit school, which we run annually, equipment purchases, apparatus replacement for our dive truck, ALS staffing during peak water season for our new fireboats, advanced rescue swimmer and swiftwater training, and then our new training maze through the video lottery funding. Recruit school permanent staffing, as you can see, there would be no disruptions to operations. What we currently do and have done in the past is we're pulling members from the field to come in and teach for the recruit class. We run one class annually of about 70 recruits. These are instructors that, instructors that are specialized, but because we're removing them from the field, we are paying overtime to backfill. We believe, as you can see, it's a no cost to the county in the first year and then with the minimal cost in the second year to then be permanently staffing with one captain, one lieutenant, and three firefighter EMT or firefighter paramedic. That is a complement that can manage that class load. But we would also then be moving to two classes per year, so classes of 35, which is a more efficient training. It shortens the ratio for instructor to new recruit. And then also, one of the really important things that we have noted from learning from other jurisdictions around us is it creates better recruitment opportunities because folks of that age range that are joining the academy don't have to wait an entire year. So if you find out about a hiring process and we've just taken the test, you have to wait a whole year for a class to start. So we hope this will continue to keep our candidate numbers very high. Complement of different types of equipment, that all falls under equipment purchases, tools, things along those lines. So field operations, PDM8 transport devices, these are mandated devices to transport children. Thermal imagers, which we currently have, this would continue to have those within the department and update them. Maternity mannequins, again, we have numerous mannequins. They are quite expensive, but we need all of those for all of our training. SCBA washer, this is what we can put our SCBAs in to clean them. We try to keep our cancer and carcinogenic levels low. So it is specifically, really just kind of looks like a giant dishwasher that you put that in, but it really helps lower the contaminants. Our collapse team, search cameras and pumps for how they do their work when they're working in that type of environment. Marine operations, the thermal imagers for the boat, along with a smaller inflatable boat. Fire marshal's office, these are the side of the office, which is our investigation side where they're cross-trained law enforcement. So this is the vest replacement for their ballistic vests that they have to have every five years. And then also chemical identifiers for our hazardous materials team. This is our current dive truck, affectionately known as our bread truck because that's exactly what it looks like. And, right, it's efficient, but it's old and she needs replacing. So she's got 23 years of wear and tear. It's obviously a specialized vehicle because it holds all of the dive equipment that our marine team needs. And the new vehicle will be built on an ambulance chassis, which Darlene could speak more to about how that is already helpful because it is a normal complement of our fleet and what we currently purchase. Summer marine staffing is something we've piloted in the past. Unfortunately, we don't see a reduction of medical calls on the water. We also don't see a reduction in trauma, boating accidents, boat fires, those types of things. It's already begun with a very busy summer season. This, part of when we purchased the two new boats is making sure we had a full ALS complement to be able to run medical calls on the water and not just be a vessel that transports patients to the shore to begin medical recovery. So it was really important that we didn't lose that time. So this is a staffing increase just for the summer weekends and the holidays that fall within the summer where we see very high water traffic. So it's a total of 38 days at 12 hours a day. And this puts the two members that are on the paramedic unit on the boat with the existing three-person crew. The boats were built specifically to be able to handle medical care, rescue, recovery. And then you all were gracious enough to allocate the money for that equipment. So we already have that in line. This also is part of our enhancement of advanced rescue swimmer. What we're seeing is because we're having so many water emergencies that we need to be training the current station members who are willing and wanting to do advanced rescue swimmer. So these are not specialized teams. This is just how to safely enter the water if you happen to be the first unit arriving on some of these calls. Almost every single one of you is affected by this because you have water in your area. And you don't have to be on the coastline. We're, we're seeing it with ponds, small lakes, tributaries, areas that you wouldn't expect. But on very hot days, we experienced this yesterday, people will enter any type of water when it gets that hot. So the advanced rescue swimmer courses is something that we want to be offering to our members, along with additionals with water training as the geography changes within the county. We're, we're seeing a greater need for that. The training maze, this is one time again from our video lottery funding. And we currently have a maze. It's very old and this replaces it. One of the great things about this maze is it offers truly real-life scenarios, but it allows us to change the scenarios multiple times. Anybody that's gone through any type of training knows if you can figure out the system, right, you can just remember it and work your way through it. So this allows us to create these real-life scenarios for firefighter self-rescue, emergency escape techniques, and then removal of down firefighters or victims. This is actually a piece of equipment that will aid many departments because we have partnerships with our Maryland Fire and Rescue Institute. So many agencies will come and use this piece of equipment. It will not just be a benefit to us. I'll continue to move through into capital projects. Quite a lengthy list for capital projects on here. These are all projects that all of you have seen before. We've talked about them numerous times. There are no changes to new projects being entered in. So everything is existing that you see. Crownesville Fire Station, hopefully everybody's had a chance to drive down and go down General's Highway at the intersection of Sunrise Beach. This is a fantastic project. We hope to be moving in by the end of June. And then once we're all settled and the station is up and running, we'll be doing a open house and a christening of sorts. So moving along very nicely, this has been a fantastic collaboration with numerous other county departments. Completed projects, which everyone has seen before, again, we're just noting on here the completion of these two stations, Jacobsville and Galesville. Fire Training Academy replacement, this would be on the same property as our 911 Consolidated Center. So 911 Center would come first, would be followed by the Training Academy. What has been great about this is we've been, been able to utilize similar services that the architect is offering. So when they're planning on doing this project, it's with the understanding of knowing the Training Academy is coming with it. So when we're talking about water sources and clearing ground and things like that, it's not completely separate. It kind of has a big brother that's moving ahead of it. So again, you can see the projected costs on the bottom as we continue into planning and engineering. Cape Sinclair Fire Station, this one's been in the queue for quite some time. We're happy to say that it is, it is moving. We had a couple of delays due to some site planning. This is also a station that we will be building on the property where the parking is so we can remain in the old station as long as possible, which is a good cost saving to the taxpayers so we don't have to do any type of temporary housing. Anarundel Fire Station 7, we're currently looking for property and hoping to do the land acquisition, as you can see, in FY 26. This is a station that we're just outgrowing and we need to make it bigger. And it certainly has some maintenance issues that we could be saving money in the long run, once we have a, a new fire station. Watch Apple, which is our station 5, that's also a similar situation. For those of you that know this area well of Anarundel Watch Apple, it is, has considerable growth. We expect to see continual growth, whether it's traffic patterns, buildings, 55 and over communities, commercial. So again, it's, we're going to need to replace this station. We do have the property right there, available and ready to go. So it'll just be plans and engineering and then continuing into the project costs. Jessup Fire Station is probably the most current one that we're working on. Again, in a matter of cost savings, we've procured the property, Race Road, Chestnut Avenue, with our partners in real estate that have helped us. And then we continue to use the plans that we have used for previous stations. So the plan that we are using for Station 6 Crownesville, we're downsizing that because we don't have all those needs for this station, which is hopefully an element of savings because we don't have to go through a design phase with every single project. So this will be the, the next up and coming groundbreaking. Jessup is currently rated as the lowest on our station of, how they're rated rather poor, their condition, things along those lines. That is all from the fire department and the whole team is available to you for questions.
I'm going to start in the operating budget. So if you can, I, I can understand it conceptually, but I want you to break it down a little bit. How are these new positions that you're going to have in training, the classes and everything going to save on overtime? Because, and I'm going to give you the backdrop for this question. Capital just published highest salaries of everybody in the county. Every single one of them is in the fire service or the police department. They make, some of them, more than twice what the county executive makes. You know, they, these are pretty good-sized numbers in terms of salaries. I was particularly interested in this, kind of another question that I'll ask, but you can touch on this. How is it that division chiefs are able to make more than their salary without any overtime number? At least that's how it's reported in the newspaper. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I'm curious how that works. So if you can talk to how the new positions are going to reduce the overtime, what that's going to do to the overall overtime budget, and then sort of pay for your folks and how they're exceeding what is their salary without overtime, I'd be curious in the answer.
Sure. I'm going to ask Darlene to answer about the positions for the Training Academy and the cost-neutral that we're seeing.
The, a lot of this has to do with us moving to the two class where we don't have as large of a class in each one, so we don't need as many instructors. So that was really a big part of this. Also with, for FY 26, it's a savings to the county because we lapsed those positions to start in December. The following year in '27, it was about even in terms of costs. I think there was a $2,000 saving before the compensation package. So it really comes out with a new format of training.
Interesting. Okay.
And your second question?
How do you make more of your salary without overtime?
Well, I'll have Darlene answer the question.
Well, we have, one of the special pay categories is bonus pay. So as part of the agreements with the chiefs, the battalion chiefs and up, that when they do work or backfill other positions in the field, they're allowed to get, based on the framework set in the agreement, a bonus pay. So if they work up to three hours, up to 12 hours, there's a rate. And that's where a lot of that comes in. There's also costs for specialty pays where, you know, depending on what you're working in, like the paramedics have a paramedic pay scale. So there's a variety of pay, special pays within that category.
And, I don't know. Councilman Volkey, I would also be happy to share the Chiefs' union contract where you can see how that's outlined because that is all.
That was going to be my question. Is this negotiated or is this?
This is negotiated within the contract.
Okay. Got you. So it's all in there. Okay. And, oh, sorry, others have questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a capital budget question. For the maze, I know you said that other organizations will be using it. Is there a monetary agreement with those other organizations or is it just? Is there a monetary agreement with those other organizations, or is it just, you know, sign up and come use it for training?
I'll actually have Chief Falzakraft speak on that because this is an agreement we have with Maryland Fire and Rescue for the Fire One classes that are down there and where those folks come from, based on University of Maryland and how they sign up for those classes.
Okay.
Good morning. Yes, the Maryland Fire Rescue Institute is the Training and Education Agency for the Fire Service in the state of Maryland. So they provide the training and fund the instructors for all of the primarily volunteer training programs that occur nights and weekends at the academy. Those programs all occur free to any fire service agency in the state of Maryland. So part of the cooperative agreement is they provide that training for free, but we host their training programs at our facility, primarily to benefit the volunteers here in Arundel County, so they don't have to travel to one of the MIFRE regional locations for training.
That is very helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Littbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also in the capital budget program, specifically the Arundel Station. I noticed in the budget book, it actually mentions, I'm going to insert my own word, "ideal," but it says "located in an area served by both water and sewer." I was just curious if you have any properties in mind. I'm looking at the water, the existing water and sewer maps, pretty familiar with the area, and there's not a whole lot of land, I don't know, that necessarily fits that description. And so I didn't know if you had a shortlist that you were ready to share, or if you're still so early in the process, maybe you don't have a list yet, which is acceptable. Just trying to gauge where we're at and if there's an idea of what you're looking at. I'm sure the community would be very curious to know.
We are. Originally, I would say in the past two years, we originally were hoping we would be up closer to the high school. That property did not pan out, so we started a new search last year. That brings us closer to where the current station resides. What we have found is, based on how tight that area is, is we need multiple property owners to agree because one piece of property from one property owner is not enough space for us. So we are continuing to look basically within a one-mile radius right there. I don't have any properties I can currently share, and that's because the real estate office has been working diligently to get those property owners to come together and make sure that we don't buy one parcel and then we can't buy another one, and now we have a piece that is much too small. So we are looking close to the intersection right there next to the station.
Sounds like a lot of different puzzle pieces yet to quite come together, and I totally respect that. Another question, I just want to make sure that I am reading and understanding the slide properly. Hold it up when we get back to it.
And I can hold back to it, too.
The project costs, there's a cost listed for FY twenty-six, which is the land acquisition, and then FY thirty for plans and engineering, FY thirty-one for construction and completion. Would it be fair to say that if you add all three of those numbers up, that would be kind of the total projected cost of building this new station? Or is there something, is there a number maybe not represented on this slide? Or do you have a number of what, all in, what this might run us when it's all said and done? Understanding that it's obviously quite a few years between now and FY thirty-one, so there'd be...
Yes, Naomi McAllister, Office of Budget. On page seventy-seven, it does have an estimated total cost of $29.9 million.
Oh, perfect. Oh, there it is. Thank you. And may I follow up? Is that in line with what the stations that we're kind of working on right now, I believe it's six and nineteen, is that kind of in the same ballpark? Or are we seeing inflationary pressures that maybe are increasing that cost a little bit? Or...
It is exactly in the ballpark of what we're currently working with.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this, maybe this is a deeper conversation I should have with DPW again. This isn't a hit on you by any stretch of the imagination, the Fire Department, because the construction costs in general, I've said this a number of years, just because I always lose sleep when I look at the numbers. The Severance Center, for example, is roughly a 25,000, 26,000 square feet facility, and I think we spent like $15 million on it. And we have other projects, and I think the Arundel Center, the one that's up right now, is $13,000, half the size, but twice the cost. And that's why I wanted to say, is there a certain building difference between what we're building for the public safety standards versus the Severance Center, which has seniors and young people in there on a regular basis? And so, and maybe that's a question for DPW, but I'm bringing it up because every time I look at the capital book, I'm always like, ah, why are the costs like significantly greater on our capital programs across the board, not just you all? And so I'm just putting a dot on the board, and maybe the administration at some point with DPW can answer that. But it always makes me lose sleep a little bit because I look at that cost, when it's nearing $2,000 a square feet for 1,500 or 2,000, and sometimes even greater, it just, I'm like, why, you know, why does the county spend that much money on construction? When the average house, cost for a house is like $200 a square feet. But on the commercial side of the house, at least with county government, it's significantly higher. I know businesses that are building warehouses right now that are similarly shaped to fire departments and police stations to some degree, and that are stone or masonry on the outside, and they're in the ballpark of like $300 and $400 a square foot. But yet, on the government side, we're like way in excess of that, and it's just, it just makes me lose sleep. But I still love the fact that you are representing the Fire Department in the best way possible, so it is not you.
Thank you. I would defer to DPW. On the cost, I think it is important to note why some of those costs are what they are based on the needs of fire and EMS that live there 24/7. And some of the things that make a difference of keeping our workforce healthy and making sure they're able to perform their job. There are also a length of risk management issues that pertain to why the station is the size it is. First and foremost, the healthy environment. There's multiple different types of systems that are in place for cancer reduction, considering the carcinogenic materials that we bring back to the station. So for instance, the ventilation system and the monitoring in the bays is completely separate from the living quarters, so we're not cross-contaminating. There's a separate ventilation system for where we store our gear. In past iterations, looking at the station up on the screen, the older stations, you know, gear could be stored in the same place where you sleep, or gear could be stored in the bay. But we have learned so much through study and research. We know that drive-through bays are the best bays and the best option, so we're not having backing accidents, or that we're able to then store additional reserve apparatus with primary first-line apparatus. So if one goes down, we don't lose service time to the community, and we're able to immediately transfer into another piece and run calls instead of having to run to a shop or go north or south and lose that travel time of having a station out of service. So when we do the opening for Crownesville, our newest station, those are a lot of the things that we'll cover when we do walkthroughs and tours. We're also making room for our community to be more engaged in the fire station with adding community rooms for HOA meeting space, for CPR trainings, things that allows people to be neighborly and within their own environment. And then we're also seeing different types of room models that we need because our workforce has become more diverse from the sixties and seventies. So how we build our showers, how we build our locker rooms, how we build our sleeping, whether or not we have lactation accommodations and maternity rooms because we see our mothers coming back to work. So it is quite a widespread of variation of items. We're also seeing an increase in staffing. So when stations were built for two members instead of six or seven, it allows a better complement of our apparatus to serve the community because they're all housed within that one station. So there is a difference of needs in this day and age and technology that goes into that along with wellness and workout rooms and things like that. But the base model of the cost is a DPW decision.
No, that, when I had a conversation with them, they mentioned that, because I compared some of the stuff we're doing versus other jurisdictions, and we're still way above that. Some of the more recent capital projects that Howard County, for example, has completed. But that's, it definitely is a DPW conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So with the station replacement that you have, when is, well, I'll ask it this way. How many stations does the county own versus how many are still volunteer-owned that you're using? And when is it that you're going to have no more volunteer-owned stations that the county is operating out of?
The, where we are, so it's 31 fire stations, it's 22 county-owned buildings, and nine volunteer-owned buildings. So some of these buildings, as we transitioned, so Cape St. Clair is a good example, that was volunteer-owned as we built that, that will be county-owned, but with the collaboration of still having volunteers. So we built that station together, even though it will still be a county-owned building. So we're starting to see that transition as we're able to put them in the capital planning queue.
So of the ones that are in the capital plan, how many of the ones that you're planning to replace are volunteer-owned versus county-owned?
Not, not including nineteen. So zero from there.
Is it?
Correct.
They're all county-owned?
They're all county-owned.
Okay, all right. So Jessup, Arundel, they're all county-owned already, Watch Apple?
Yes, sir.
Got you. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here. Chief, you were here a few months ago talking about staffing patterns, and do we have an update and then a timeline of when Arundel County might get closer to our national standards?
We do. Thank you for asking. The update I recently gave you all was the staffing based on what we had projected. And at the time, we had a consultant in working on our standards of cover document. What I committed to you all is that after I met with the county executive and presented to him, we've also presented to the union that I would be presenting to you all. I meet with him this week and am going to be able to present the standards of cover document to him and explain the needs that we're seeing based on fire and EMS. We have started a task force work group with the union to collaborate, to be able to prioritize those items that we see for staffing. So when I get a chance to get on your all's calendar and do the same for you all and present that standards of cover document, that will help us hone in and tighten up that number. What I can say is the information that I did give you on that day is very close to being accurate, so we did a good job of making that assessment. We now have a lot of the data and understanding of the geography in the different communities that back that up to be able to successfully increase our workforce where we need to, but to back it up on need and how we're going to do that in a priority order.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Circling back to Cape St. Clair, the community is incredibly excited about this project. My understanding is that it is out to bid or was out to bid. Has that process completed? Is that, have we settled on? We have, you can, thank you.
So the project right now is just waiting for building permits from the county.
Okay.
So it's, and beyond that, it's ready to shovel-ready?
Okay, so is early 2026 still, is that the completion date or, hold on?
Construction to begin.
Oh, early FY twenty-six. So August, September?
That's the hope.
Okay, I like that.
And the council would receive notification because we'll do a groundbreaking.
Perfect. And then, this is probably not a question that you can answer, and I see Mr. Braun sitting in the back, so maybe he could jot down a note for DPW. As you all are building new facilities, training facilities, I would assume you no longer need where the facility currently exists and the Arundel Fire Station. I'm just wondering what the county intends to do with those properties as we no longer utilizing them for the use that they currently have. I don't think that you can answer that question. So, Mr. Braun, if you don't mind just jotting that down, I'll be asking that when you all come. You don't have to come up, but it looks like you might be coming up. Sure, come on up.
It won't take that long. David Braun with the Department of Public Works. We don't know. To be honest with you, as more departments see the Fire Training Academy and being ready to move, we have gotten a lot of inquiries about what's going to happen with that land. And the hope is that sometime in the FY twenty-six, FY twenty-six timeframe, we'll be starting a study with all of the departments to try to identify what the best use for that land is.
Okay. I'm just going to put a bug in your ear because Animal Care and Control is in my district and is right in that area. They're looking for new space.
I understand that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Nice question. So you roughly have 954 career uniform personnel right now? It was on your slide.
Yes, sir.
What is the ideal, to me, the standards that my colleague mentioned earlier, you need an additional, how many to have for operators per vehicle?
So by National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, which are the national standards that we use, the ideal is four per piece of large apparatus, whether that's trucks, squad, engine...
What would be the, so what should the size, and just, you know, just in theory, if you had a magic wand or use that, what would the right size for the Arundel County Police Department be then to achieve those standards?
Is... Fire Department?
Fire Department, yes.
I was saying, because I'll take a swag at police. They want...
Oh, no, no, no. I know police.
Fifteen hundred.
So roughly fifteen hundred?
No, 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 that was the police swag for you. I was just going to go high so they get what they need, too.
I was thinking, I was thinking twelve.
So this is exactly the standards of cover document. That's what it will tell us because depending in the order in which we staff, will make a difference of year to year what that number is. There is not one hard number, which I've continued to say, but if we were to take the count of all of our pieces of apparatus and put four personnel in there, that would, what we'd be considered fully staffed for large apparatus. But you also have to consider, that means we need more EMS supervisors and chase vehicles. We would most likely need an additional battalion, so we would need another battalion chief, which then also spurs the support staff.
Right, there's a tooth and a tail of it, right? And so that tail, the tooth comes with that tailpiece, yes.
Correct. So when we do the review on that standards of government document, that will be able to gauge, and you'll be able to then understand how that kind of flows and what that would look like. Right now, we're currently staffed with three on an apparatus. So of all of the 31 stations, you know, and all the resources in there, you can, even if you're just adding one or two per station, the other area that we have to consider is when you get into our medical needs. Some of the stations have two units, some have one. So whether we need an advanced life support unit and a basic life support unit, you can see by the number of the transports on the bottom, that number continues to go up and up every year. So we have to consider, I hate to do it, the size of our stations, and a four-bay station really starts to make a difference as we start adding in these additional resources because our unit utilization hours just become so outrageous that we need to lower that number, that the units just physically can't get to the calls and get to the hospital and make sure they're delivering a patient with the wait times at the hospital.
Right. At least five an hour, every day, three to five days a year. That's your number, that's what it represents, five people going to the hospital, five every hour.
Our hospital partners are doing great, and those numbers are coming down, but it still doesn't compete with the amount of needs we have for transport.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Littbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going off of memory, and so I'm not 100% confident, but I just wanted to make sure, to kind of clarify on Mr. Volkey's question with the Arundel Station. So the county owns the building, right? The volunteers had built it and then donated it to the county, but I think some of the land that it sits on, is that still owned by the volunteer?
They have the, there's a parcel next door where their training center is?
And kind of like, it loops kind of around the back, right? But that's, that's a separate parcel than what the actual physical station, that part that loops around the back where, I don't know how it's parceled, but they do own that. Okay.
Yeah, they don't own the parcel that the station sits on.
Okay.
So the county owns the station and the parcel land that that station is built on. They own, as the chief said, the land their training center is and a little bit that loops around.
Thank you for clarifying. I knew there was a little bit where that cell tower is and exactly where that line was, I wasn't 100% sure. So thank you for clarifying from my memory.
Any further questions for a police department, Fire Department? I'm sorry, getting the public safety mixed up here. So thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting. It's a long day. And now we will bring up the Police Department.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Amal Howard, I serve as Chief of Police for Anarundel County, and I will go through brief introductions of our staff and then turn things over to Bo, and he will turn things back over to me.
Good morning. Katie Roberts, Deputy Chief for Anarundel County Police Department.
Good morning, I'm Adrian Johnson with Media Relations.
Hi, Henry Farrell, Police Administration.
This is Bo Zhao from the Budget Office. So, the Police Department FY26 proposed budget can be found on page 285 of the Budget Book. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Zhao. Good afternoon. So we're excited to be here to present to you our proposed budget for 2026. I'll just roll right into the next slide, if you will. You're very familiar with our organizational chart, you're familiar with all four of our bureaus, in addition to all of our district stations and other investigative components. The one significant change on our org chart has been the movement of our Office of Homeland Security and Intelligence, which also houses our Real-Time Information Center, and making that a direct report to the Office of the Chief, just given the consideration and magnitude of their role, not only within the organization but within the community. Next slide, please. Here's our, you're very familiar with our mission statement. In addition to the fact that our department adopted the tenets of 21st Century Policing several years ago, our current, or our proposed budget shows an increase to two point, I'm sorry, 224 million. And the proposed positions primarily involve the five that we're requesting with our Real-Time Information Center, but it will take our sworn staffing level to 811 from the current rate or current number, and then 228 professional staff. That number is lower because, as you've heard, it's taking into consideration the transfer of those personnel from the Police Department to the Animal Care and Control Department. If we can move on to the next slide, please. So, our most recent addition to the Police Department, most of which you all are very familiar, this is second to our most important investment in our Police Department, which obviously primarily is our men and women, but this is our most prudent and unique investment in technology to date, creating essentially a virtual partner, providing critical information and intelligence to our police officers in real time. And I'm just going to give a brief overview for those who aren't with us today so that they understand what the Real-Time Information Center is. We've given it the name, abbreviated name, ARTIC. It's not intended to replace full-time police officers required to appropriately staff our Police Department. We know that it's very important for our community to see our police officers out in the community, so it's not intended to replace actual human beings, but it will supplement the work that our officers perform. It currently is supplementing the work that our officers perform every day. Your consideration and approval of these new five positions will enhance our operational coverage, drawing us closer to staffing our Real-Time Information Center full-time. As you're aware, we're operating it during peak times on a part-time basis, and the goal is to get us to full-time, because our officers are working all shifts and actually, from the onset, when they were first introduced to this resource, they saw its value, and we've been hearing from our officers asking for every shift, which we knew would pretty much happen. We know it enhances our capabilities to keep our officers safe while they continue to safeguard Anarundel County, simply because we have hundreds already, in a short time, we've been operating of examples where the Real-Time Information Center has assisted our officers out on patrol while they're conducting investigations or responding to critical incidents, getting that information to them in real time, right in the palm of their hands. We're a regional leader, truly, on ARTIC, piquing the attention, just for the audience and yourselves, of our federal, state, and local partners who do request to come and see it. This is a new technology embraced by public safety nationally, and you're seeing more departments invest in real-time crime centers or information centers, simply because we're all struggling with staffing. And again, this resource supplements patrol and helps us locate, identify, and apprehend violators of the criminal law. You'll see 980K representation of annual fees. All that essentially is, is a recurring fee. As you're aware, last year, we were awarded a COPS grant in that amount, and we have to pick up now, moving forward, the responsibility for upgrading cameras or installing cameras in neighborhoods that, where we've identified gaps or the need based on crime data and calls for service. So, there's also technology-based licensing fees incorporated in that number, in addition to, again, just ensuring that locations where our focus areas or hotspots require us to invest in those neighborhoods. Some future benefits of the entire technology in the Real-Time Information Center, as you're aware, you know, it involves the CCTV camera systems, the LPR systems, but we're also near implementation with the gunshot detection systems as well. There are additional technologies, I won't belabor you with them right now, but we're just really excited, one, to have this investment, and, two, have the opportunity to appropriately staff it so that we can continue to provide the service that our community has come to expect from its Police Department. And with that, I will turn things over to Deputy Chief Roberts.
Thank you, Chief. The importance of police having quick access to schools cannot be overstated, especially when we are talking about enhancing the safety and security for not only our students but also the staff. We currently have access to the interior cameras of all of our schools, however, we cannot get inside of them unless we are buzzed in. Every second counts, and the longer it takes us to breach a door is a life that could possibly be lost. A lock box allows police to quickly access the schools without delays caused by waiting for keys or gaining permission to enter. The lock boxes we have identified to purchase are durable, rugged, and secure, and are able to hold keys or key cards. We feel a $75,000 investment to enhance school safety is nominal when you are talking about saving lives of children, so the game plan for this summer is to install each of these lock boxes at the 126 public schools we have in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn things over to Mr. Henry Farrell.
So this is the time you've been waiting for, the explanation of the comparative statement of expenditures. So, this page, I'm going to try to make sense of for you, there's a lot going on here. Not a lot of it's new, but we've had success in the past, just looking at this one page, there's a dozen Budget Book pages to flip through, and the Budget Office does not put this together to sufficiently confuse everyone, it's a charter requirement to explain it by fund, character, and object, and that's why we're looking at it that way. So let's look at the fund real quick. You can see there is a $6.2 million increase in the general fund. A bulk of that is personal services, I'll get into that detail a little bit more when we get down to the object level. In the forfeit and asset seizure fund, there's a $250,000 increase. All that money will be spent on small ticket, equipment replacement, things like cameras in the evidence collection unit, digital forensic unit laptops, some K-9 trading aids, speed trailers, and the like. The grant fund, you can see an increase of $487,000. That's a makeup of approximately 30 different grants. Biggest ones increasing in there would be the Fresh Start Program and an SRO grant. The last fund is the video lottery, local impact aid, and a slight increase of $190,000, where they have agreed to fund some equipment replacement for us as well in there, things like ballistic vests, CCTV cameras, LPRs, et cetera. So the next one-third of this statement is character, otherwise known as bureau. In the Police Department, it's very difficult to make sense of the bureau layout, and that is due to the fact that when we will have 50 officers resign or retire throughout the year, most of them will be in the Patrol Services Bureau. At the time they retire, their position gets moved into the Training Academy, that's in the Administrative Services Bureau. And so, all year long, these changes happen, and these numbers swing drastically. Fifty positions at some points of the year could be a $5 million swing from one to the next, so trying to make sense of that is chasing your tail around. So let's move down to the objects, if we could, and I will explain to you what those changes and what some of those items are in the budget line. So in the Personal Services object, you can see there's a $6.9 million increase. Stephen from the Budget Office and I just worked this out in the back while fire was going, that had we not removed animal care and control from this, there would be a $10 million increase in that line. So there is the reflection of the change. Also in that $6.9 million are six new positions, five of which the chief hit on briefly, two officers, three public safety analysts, and there is a new custodial position in the budget this year. The next line is contractual services. There is a $980,000 increase in that line for ARTIC technology fees, but due to some other reductions in the Police Department, and more specifically, the removal of animal control contractual expenses, hence the number's a lot lower than 980. Same thing is happening in supplies and materials, relatively little change in the Police Department, but a reduction due to the animal care and control supplies being moved over into the new department. In the Business and Travel line, there's an $85,000 increase, about half of that is in the, is in the Grant Fund Training line, and then in Capital Outlay, you'll see a $300 reduction. In last year's budget, we were funded a very large amount of money for a license plate reader project, and so that project has been changed in technology with a, virtually a new way of doing business in the technology world in policing, and so we don't have these large capital expenses any longer. So, with that $640,000 we had last year for one intersection, we can now throw out 20 or 30 cameras in different places, due to some legislative changes in the state. There was once kind of a monopoly that Maryland Crime Analysis Center only wanted to deal with one company, it was a security information scenario, and they figured that out, and now we're able to go out into the market and find other vendors and do things less expensive. And then in the Grants line, you can see another reduction of $120,000, that's really just a transfer of some subpoena expenses that really weren't grants and contributions, they rarely were contractual services, so they've been moved up into the contractual services zone. So let's talk about, that's the increase column, let's talk about the budget column, and some of these numbers are kind of large, so what is in them? Contractual services, $21.6 million. Almost 15 million of that has to do with paying the garage for vehicles, operating, brakes, fuel, et cetera, and then the eventual replacement as well. Another two and a half million dollars of that is red light speed camera expenses, and then a million dollars of it has to do with access for mobile data computers for our officers out in the field. So, supplies and materials at $4 million, that's a huge variety of things, but some of the biggest are replacement of ballistic vests, ammunition, uniforms, aviation fuel, there's 25 other things that make that up, they're all smaller tickets than the one I've mentioned, but a big variety. Business and travel is mostly training, and a lot of that is grant training out of that 855, and then the capital outlay of 3.7. $1.4 million of that is leftover money from the COPS Technology Grant, $1.4 million of that is also VLT money, there is a half million dollars of police capital, and a quarter million dollars of fast expenses that we've already talked about. So, I mean, that's kind of the summary, there's not a lot of new things happening here. If you, if you want to flip through the Bureau pages and you have questions, I'll try to answer them, but I guess there's only one more page in the Budget Book that I'd like to go to, and that is the summary of the budgeted positions, and we talked about this a little bit earlier today with animal control. In summary here, we gave up 34 positions from the Animal Care Control Unit, we gained six new positions that we've already talked about, that's the net of 28 for us. So, from the operating perspective, that's all I really prepared, because there's not a lot of new things other than the ARTIC Center for us. The next slide is moving on to the Capital Improvement Program, and so we've conveniently put four, sorry, five projects on one page for you to make things simple, but I will refer to the page. As you can see, if you're interested in looking at the detail, first is the new police firing range, 31 million. That's on page 83 of your Capital Budget and Program, and we are at the status of submitting building and grading permits on that. The next project is the Northern District Police Station at roughly $40 million. We are at the finalizing architectural design of that project. The next is the Police Training Academy, page 87 of your Capital Book, and about to wrap that project up, we're at the punch list stage of items and final grading. The, we are constructing walls and doing various site work on the next one, Evidence and Forensic Silence Unit Building at 39 million, that's on page 90, and is on target. And the last one is the Police Special Operations of 14.2 million, that's on page 93 of your Capital Book, and we have just started clearing that site to begin work. So that's all the budget comments we've prepared, if you have any questions, we'd love to try to answer them for you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So, the auditor tells us that you all have 66 vacancies right now, and you have a training class that's coming in in August that has 20 recruits in the class. So we've done a lot of things to try to increase incentives for laterals, to raise starting pay. So we've done a lot of things to try to increase incentives for laterals, to raise starting pay, et cetera. It seems like, I've heard some that it's working, but then that causes me concern when I see that there's sort of 46 vacant positions even after your upcoming class comes through. I don't know if you can speak to it. I'm not trying to zing you. I'm just trying to figure out what more we can do. Because, you know, my first thought looking at your budget is, why aren't we adding police officers? And then I'm seeing the vacancy number, and I'm going, well, I kind of understand why you're not adding because you can't even fill the positions you have. But that across the board is all a concern, all the way around. So, you know, and I think these same comments, just by the way, so that my fire department friends don't feel slighted, remain true for them too, right? They're not adding positions either. But I'm just asking you all because the vacancy number is so high.
I just want to clarify, initially you spoke to 66 vacancies.
That's what it says.
66 vacancies. It's actually 42 vacancies according to our officer personnel. Yeah, for sworn officers. So that may include also some of our professional civilian staff vacancies as well, I'm assuming. But
So 42 sworn vacancies.
Sworn vacancies.
Got you. Thank you for closing.
And just as every other agency throughout the country, we too are giving our best effort at recruiting. I don't know what to say beyond that other than I've been encouraging non-police folks to have conversations with their loved ones about signing up, stepping up and answering the call simply. We need the help. We need good people with service-oriented hearts to help us. But I know firsthand, I speak again regularly with our dedicated recruiter and some of the decentralized recruiters who are out here at college events, community events, military installations, just consistently recruiting and using creative ways to recruit, using, you know, video technology on mobile vehicles. And they visit, you know, stadiums and games, just, I mean, I could go through a litany of our recruitment efforts, but I think the onus rests with all of us in encouraging people that we know with service-oriented hearts to step up and answer the call to serve. I also know that we have not compromised our hiring standards. And if you do not meet the expectations that are required for you to become a police officer in Anaronda County, you will not be successful in becoming one of us. Just that simple. Unless you have anything additional that I omit.
Now, the only thing I will say is we are seeing our application numbers increase this year. So the numbers that you referred to today with the classes that started this year, that process started last year. The beginning of this year, we made a couple of minor adjustments, not minor, but pretty good adjustments to our process. We went to an online testing, the written test. It also changed the format of the test. We saw a higher percentage of people wanting first taking the test. They don't have to drive to a facility to take the test now. They can take it online, and that's good as long as the test never changes. And we saw a lot more now passing that phase because they were showing up and taking it because they were doing it in their home. We also started the process with the help from personnel authorizing it is to pre-hire our candidates, so we're not losing them now to other agencies waiting around for us to start. We can pre-hire them before the academy starts. So we're starting to see the numbers now. We're hoping our next couple of classes will be in the mid-20s to 30s with those minor adjustments that we made with the department. We are seeing the applications rise significantly this year.
And if I may, just as a last, you recently received the staffing, you know, briefing consistent with all you heard the deputy chief speak to. But, you know, the things that we cannot control are, yes, you know, we're very proud. This was the first time we had a class of 20 recruit officers, but so far we've lost five. Some feel like, you know, they, it was a reality check for them, and they just decided, hey, this is not for me. And then again, that's why my appeal is to, if we know people, good people, who desire to serve their community, please, we all need to be encouraging them and not discouraging them from applying to the profession.
Those are the Budget Office. I just want to add a comment that the FY '26 proposed budget does include a one-time funding to remake the police recruitment video. So that hopefully going to help the recruiting process.
Star in that, Chief?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick note, thank you for the Arctic. I'm very hopeful that that's going to be a needed resource and tool that's going to aid public safety in a significant way. In my military capacity, I have seen similar capabilities be deployed to help our service members when we're deployed. And it was a tremendous asset. And so I know it can be an asset here. And so whatever continuation of truly getting that to a 24/7 state, I think it's, I think it's going to be a huge aid to policing in general. And so I would encourage you to continue to put your, put pressure on getting the sensors and IT, whatever is required in that facility to make sure it's up and running so that the officers on the front line have access to that resource, and it's aiding them in doing their job more professionally. One. Second, I ran into a couple of police officers over the last couple of months, nothing. The good thing is I ran into them. They didn't run into me, so they didn't pull me over or anything, but just had conversations. The mission and the way they've been conducting themselves, I'm grateful that you're spreading that word because, you know, when you go online and you look at YouTube, they got all types of videos for officers that are, you know, doing things that are just crazy. Even a couple of Anaronda County, they weren't crazy. But when I went back and looked at some of those videos, I was like, oh, they actually handled themselves pretty well. I was actually proud of the way they conducted themselves in some of these online videos that go viral because of it. But our, the leadership we have is certainly sort of conveying, and the message is getting down that they're to be responsible, just treat everyone the way they want to be treated. And so I'm grateful that the officers are, at least the ones that I've seen, have been sort of acting that way. And the last thing to add to your, it is the culture that needs to change in public safety in general from the citizen side and the elected official side of the House to support you all. The superintendent just came in the other day, and he's a data-driven guy. And I will be up at 12 o'clock at night punching numbers in my head just to see correlations and charts and everything else. And he was saying how he has closed the gap on teachers. You've seen it come down. The health officer earlier today with the nurses, she said, what, six days, a few hours or whatever it is between those? So other professions are finding ways to quickly hire folks. But public safety still has this brand that makes it unappelling to some sort of population sectors. And so I would say from our standpoint and from our viewpoint, we on the community side of the House have to help you more in changing the culture of what policing is meant to be. It's not, it's not meant to be some big brother sort of, you know, ego-driven profession that just wants to cause people harm. I think the way you've been sort of allocating the, instructing the police officers to communicate with the public is a way to help with that, but we need to do more to change the culture here to say, hey, these professions are really good professions. They really help us. We really need it. And so whatever I can do to help with that, I will certainly spread that word in the communities that I'm involved in because policing is important. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if I just may respond to that. Have I shared with you that, you know, Kalia was recently in to conduct our four-year onsite assessment? And I'll be succinct. For the first time, these two particular assessors, one was a senior gentleman and one was fresh, freshly minted. But they conducted a thorough assessment of our department as they always do. And in the introduction, I said, hey, I will not, you know, try to sell you our department. You will experience it yourselves, and I'm looking forward to your feedback. So upon their exit interview, for the first time in this one 30-year tenure person's experience, he said he had no recommendations, that we should keep doing what we're doing. We're a great department. You hear me say we're the best damn police department in this country. I firmly believe it. And when I said that to the assessor, his words directly were, I would agree with that statement, Chief. Now, in the past, by previous assessors, we were told that they needed more Anarundles as example, examples of a great department. But there was another assessor who said that, yes, of all the departments that he had evaluated in his tenure, he would place us in the top five as humbling and an honor to consistently hear over and over and over again. So, you know, we're appealing to good men and women, you know, to choose Anarunda County Police Department.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Volkey alluded to an article that came out in the paper during the fire department. And it was centered on the overtime number, which to the general public does look sort of alarming. I was hoping, I also got to hear a radio interview on WBAL, which one of your retired officers clarified the situation in overtime quite clearly. And it sort of took the air out of that balloon. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about that overtime versus our sworn officers. And also maybe talk a little bit about the shift, the transition to the 12-hour shift and how we think that might alleviate some overtime and take, give our officers some reprieve.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that question. I was about to bring that to your attention, the 12-hour shift. And I'm going to defer to Deputy Chief Roberts because she has overseen that project from start to finish. And we're not complete, but she's very much conversant with all the nuances.
Thank you. So to address first question, the overtime and the expenditures with that. So as you see with the 42 vacancies, that's a personnel shortage. So most of our overtime, 5.3 million of that is personnel shortages. We have 51 posts that must be manned 24/7. If they're not, we have to hire overtime. And when we have 42 vacancies, we're hiring a lot of overtime for the personnel shortages. So most of the overtime that these officers are making, it is regulated. We do have a very good system where they have to go in to sign up for the overtime. So it factors in how often they're working, the fatigue rule. So a lot of safety measures are placed. But the overtime that we put out there is mandatory overtime that has to be filled. So these officers have to work it. If it's just a few that are working it, that's because they prefer to make the overtime. There's officers that don't want to work overtime, so they're not making as much overtime. But the money that they're making in overtime is mandatory for the police department in order to succeed our operational needs, our investigative needs. Detectives were put out into rotational to help supplement the personnel shortages. They still had cases that they had to investigate, so they had to use overtime to do interviews outside of when they were working patrol for those two weeks. So everything that the overtime comes back to is an operational necessity for the police department. The reason why we did go to the 12-hour shift is because we think that will cut down on our personnel shortages. That gave in 30 more officers back into patrol that we could put in there that will cover the personnel shortages that we currently have. So we're hoping once we go to that 12-hour shift, that personnel shortage overtime that we're seeing now, that will decrease significantly.
And again, everything ties back to the national picture for public safety and the lack of appropriate staffing for all of our departments or people willing to become police officers today.
The other thing I wanted to add because community-oriented policing is very important to this department. We did not want to let that go, knowing that we had to put officers back into patrol because that is the backbone of our agency. We have to answer 911 calls. We weren't ready to let go of the community events that we do because that's very important for the community to see us out there, being a part of their community. So that took overtime. We had to pay officers to maintain those events that you used to see our PACT officers do that unfortunately had to go back out into patrol. So that's another expense that we've had to endure with overtime.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question, but just for members of the public who may not have followed the article, can you just share the shift timing that we currently have versus moving to the 12-hour?
So the rotation, what we do now, and it's been since I've been on the department for 30 years, it's a six-and-three schedule, so they work six days on, three days off. We have a rotational shift that rotates between our day shift and our evening shift, and then we have a permanent midnight shift. It's a very difficult shift. It's not looked upon very friendly, especially when people look to see what their hours are applicants. They see that six days, and they kind of get turned away with it. Officers that we talk from other agencies that want to come to Anaronda County are just waiting for us to do away with the six-and-three schedule because they don't want to work that. And if you look at the other agencies, especially the Big Seven, almost all but one have gone to a 12-hour shift because of the staffing shortages. But there's also wellness officer piece to it. They get more days off out of the year with more officers out there. It's not like they're doing now where they're going call to call to call. They'll have more officers helping with calls for service. So not only is it for a personnel shortage for the department's sake, it's also a wellness for the officer's sake.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And now, members of the public do too. I do have one quick question on the Community Services, page 289. Personal services is an increase of 4.1. But what I noted is it says the internal transfer of employees from other bureaus is one of the reasons behind that. Can you just elaborate on that internal transfer? Because I was looking at the chart and trying to see where the transfer was taking place, and it didn't pop out to me.
Yeah, so what we did as an agency, this was last year, where we saw the critical staffing levels decreasing. We knew we had to do something. We started looking at our numbers. And what we have with our specialized units and patrol were almost identical percentage-wise, and that should never happen. We should have significantly more patrol officers out in patrol than we did in our specialized units. So we knew we had an issue. So we had to identify certain units that we knew that we could transfer back into patrol that were, I won't say that weren't an operational necessity, but we knew we could do without for a little while to put them back into patrol because that was, like I said, the priority for our department, that we have to have them answering 911 calls. So we kind of did a workflow analysis of identifying a more low-risk unit that we could, it's a luxury unit to have, but not a necessity for the department. So we identified 26 of those detectives in those specialized assignments, and we moved them back out into patrol. So with that, the units that were still standing had to absorb some of that workload, which caused some of that overtime as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Littbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Switching gears a little bit, I wanted to just ask a question about the school lock boxes. Sounds like a wonderful program, and I imagine that there will be a lot of support in communities for it. Just one question that I can kind of predict possibly getting is, is there any concern about those lock boxes being vulnerable to being broken into? I just would love to hear you talk about the safety and security of those boxes to ease people's minds proactively.
Sure, absolutely. When we started looking at the different lock boxes, we ordered a couple of them and had our Training Academy do some T&amp;E on them. They're the ones that recommended the right one. I can tell you, they had fun trying to break into those boxes. And they also did, as far as a stressor, using our recruits, the ones that they could open the fastest because there's different ones. There's a combination, there's a press button, there's a whole different variety. So there's a lot of testing done down at our Training Academy by our staff and by also our recruit officers that are currently down there. That's what came us to the one that we decided to select because it was the most durable. And I'll just leave it at that without getting into any more security-related things.
I completely understand OPSEC, so yeah, not asking you to compromise that.
But I will say they're very durable.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for the detail.
Are there any further questions for our police department? And thank you so much. Yes, the Arctic is amazing and already doing great things, so.
May I give one more plug? I didn't utilize the platform appropriately. So our residents have an opportunity to share video from their security systems via, you know, your, whatever brand, your video doorbell or your perimeter cameras. And I just would encourage our residents to sign up. We don't have access to your cameras. You provide the video to us. Your privacy is protected and intact. It would be you helping us anonymously or however you choose to identify yourself, helping us solve crimes. So if you would go to www.konecannarundal.org, you could sign right up. So far, we have 420 residents who have taken advantage of signing up to assist us. So we appreciate your support. We know our community loves us, and we hope that they too can help us in the fight against crime in Anarunda County.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. And continuing with our Public Safety Day, the Sheriff's Office.
Budget Office, you can find the sheriff's budget on page 331 of your budget book. And I will turn it over to the sheriff for his presentation. it over to the sheriff for his presentation.
Well, I would say good morning, but good afternoon. It's not evening yet, so we'll go with that. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, thank you for having us. Rest of the county council, thank you. I feel as though listening to everybody else, I think is going to be lightweight. I think it's going to go pretty well, so thank you. To my left, I have my chief, my Colonel, Colonel Williams, and then I have my budget analyst, Ms. Mary Bell. And we'll start with our mission. Our mission has changed since I've taken over, but it pretty much remains the same to this day. We strive to meet the needs of the circuit court and the citizens of Anaronda County. Now, the cornerstone to this is our values, which is modern, effective, efficient, and transparent. We've become, we've changed the agency some. We're striving to be more modern. We've brought drones into our complement. We utilize those when we go out and do serve warrants. Instead of just sending deputies out blindly, we now send a drone up over target residents so we can get an aerial view of it. And I'd like to say also, I am a leader of an agency. I'm the type of leader that I find ways, I just don't come with my hands open. And then let me digress a little bit. I'll go back to my Prince George's County days as a major there. I was a major of the training academy there, and we were in need of buses. And I was able to purchase two buses at a total cost of about $120,000 each from my training academy budget without going to the county council or without going to the chief of police asking for the funding. What I did do was, I also was in charge of getting less lethal equipment for the agency. We were able to get some grants, and we utilized the grants for the less lethal equipment. Then we transferred the other money over to purchasing the buses. And you'll be happy to know, we purchased those buses right here in Anaronda County. We utilized drones. We also created our first peer support system. The health of our deputies and our civilian personnel is very important to me. This peer support system allows them to seek help without having to be identified to management or to anyone else. We've worked with a residential treatment facility in the state of Maryland where our deputies can go and our civilian personnel can go as well. We also do that for our retired personnel. Again, we want to be effective as possible. We do routine audits. We do away with programs that are not effective, and we bring more resources to programs that are effective. We're also very efficient. You realize, well, you know, you approved it in the last budget, that we created a SPO program, Special Police Officer Program. That allows us to take deputies off of the doors in different areas and put them in more critical areas that are needed. And we are transparent. We created the first Internal Affairs, which allows us to handle investigations and also put information out there to the public that they should be aware of. You might be aware that we utilized this in our last incident with a deputy, unfortunately, but we did put it out to social media and to the more traditional media platforms as well. Next page. The flow chart, the flow chart pretty much remains the same. We do underneath the Office of Professional Compliance, you see that last place is the complaint advocate. That was mandated by the state, and that allows us to work with the citizens, that position, to keep citizens informed of the complaint process, and they can call the complaint advocate if they have any questions or concerns. If you go down a little further, the Bureau of Administration to the far right, the quartermaster position. That is a newly created position that you guys approved. That allowed us to take a deputy out of that position and again, put them in a more critical area that was needed. On the next page, our staffing highlights. We have done very well. We have done very well. The deputies and the civilians have bought into the concept that everybody is a recruiter, and we have a great product to present to people. As you can see in fiscal year '25, we brought on a total of 16 new deputies. There are eight new hires that are currently in the police academy, two recent graduates from the academy that are on the street, and we had brought on six laterals as well. Three civilians and four temporary contractual personnel, and those again are the SPOs that I was telling you about. We have some additional pending hires for FY '25, which is two sworn laterals, two civilian, and another contractual person. And I want to remind you that I don't have a recruiting department or anything like that. And my recruiting budget is roughly about $10,000. During our time here, we have been able to fill the void. We had about 20 vacancies. And as you turn over to the next page, 20 sworn vacancies. We have an approval of 88 sworn deputies. We currently have 80, and that includes the ones that are in the academy. We're set to graduate some in July. We'll have some graduating. 31 civilians, 29 current, we've got six contractual courses and attempts, three bureaus with 15 Let me say this also about our vacancies. This has helped us a great deal, you know, filling these vacancies, because there was a shooting homicide that occurred not walking distance from this facility. And when that occurred, deputies responded. They responded to the actual scene. They were able to go to the hospital with one of the victims and sit with the victim while Annapolis City Police were able to do their thing, and then they finally came and relieved our deputy. And we also had a deputy posted up outside of this building to ensure that nobody ran into this building. Next page. We serve a lot of civil process, you know, we serve a lot. And if you look through the numbers, criminal summonses, 2,000, look through them all. So all of these, the civil process that we serve for the year, fiscal year '24, because '25 is not over, we served a total of 51,554 pieces of paper. That was done by one sergeant and 10 people. So when you break it down, we're talking about 260 working days, give or take a week, eight hours a day. Now, the thing that you also need to know about this is, every piece of document is time-sensitive. It's not like it can sit anywhere. Every document has to be served within a certain amount of time. That's a lot to ask for for one sergeant and 10 people. I think we've got a better on-time delivery rate than FedEx or UPS or anybody. I just asked the Colonel, do we get any complaints about stuff being delivered? Like, he's like, that rarely happens. People are doing an excellent job. What we're giving you is a service that is, how can I say? It's the value that you get from the sheriff's department, I would probably say in law enforcement is the best in this state. I know the chief says she's the best, but I would say from the sheriff's office, you're getting the best bang for your buck. Next page. We requested an IT position, but I talked to Mr. Trumbauer, and what the county has done, we understand that these times that we're in, you know, financially restrictive. So what the county has agreed to do, the county executive, is they created an IT position for law enforcement. So we hope that'll work, and we'll work with it as well. New positions. I am always looking at ways, how can we put deputies in these more sensitive areas and take them out of the routine areas? So we have two new communications positions, and where they will work at is in the courthouse. We have a communications section that is in field operations away from the courthouse, but we also have a communication section in the courthouse. So these civilian communication operators, they'll free up deputies to be in the more sensitive areas of courtrooms or doing other things that are needed. And I don't want to say half the cost, but they're not quite as expensive. So we're always looking at ways to save the county money. There's a reclassification of current positions from OS '04 to OS '06, and these are clerical positions. This is like a historical wrong that the county has agreed to right. For some reason, we had a group of individuals, OS '04, doing the same thing as the '06, but they were paid at different wages. So the county has agreed to fix that. It was only like 10 personnel. So they've agreed to fix it, believe me, in the big scheme of things. I think the pricing is like $30,000 to $40,000, so that has been taken care of. And the last thing, again, I said my request was small. What you'll find out is, as I come before you, when I first came before you, I was asking for a lot, because this is an agency that has been ignored for far too long. In the past 20 to 30 years, there's been an increase in sworn personnel positions of about six. Six positions for sworn personnel. Now, I'm trying to change that, but it's not going to happen overnight, and I don't expect you to make sure it happens overnight. So the additional personnel will come down at a later date, not this budget. But what I am looking for, though, is the vehicles. The vehicles has been a key part of our recruiting efforts. You know, just like I told you, deputies were able to respond here for the shooting, the homicide. Well, they didn't run here, they didn't walk here, they drove here. They actually drove here, right? They got here in a timely manner. I don't know if you saw it, but we just did a warrant sweep. We called it JAWS, Joint Agency Warrant Sweep. We called it JAWS. We were able to close out 86 warrants. That's because I was able to take deputies from the courthouse, because the courthouse was somewhat closed. I took deputies from the courthouse, they had their cars, and we put them out on the street. And I love saving the county money, so we also brought on other agencies as well. And I wish the chief was here, Chief Alwood was here, because I thank her personally in front of all of you, because we worked with them, and they gave us 20 police officers, 20 police officers to do this sweep. The state police kicked in some people as well. This is us working with other agencies to get the best bang for the buck. We closed these 86 warrants. We're going to do it again this summer, and then we're going to do it again before the year closes out. And this is going to be the norm. See, the first part of my administration was getting everything in place, getting the equipment that we needed, the vehicles that we needed, the filling that void, that 20-person void. Now, we're going into the apprehension phase. Apprehension phase is where we're getting out there. We're going to close some of these warrants down. But the big problem right now is, these vehicles, again, they're critical, and I need these vehicles for the recruiting efforts and for us to stay out there on the street. For every person we don't pick up on the street, it's just another problem for the county police. We have 15,000 open warrants in this county. Now, the 15,000, don't let me scare you, I don't think they're all here in this county. We're identifying those who actually live in this county. We're identifying those who are now deceased. We're identifying those who are already locked up, so that 15,000 will go down. But these vehicles are critical. We need these vehicles, because if we don't get these vehicles, then we're going to start sliding backwards. And again, remember, I said we're not where we should be. I want to get to the point where if we have a position, we have a vehicle for that position. I don't come to you, again, with my hands out without having a possible solution. I've been talking to my counterparts in Wacomico County, Cecil County, and they no longer purchase their vehicles. What they do is they lease them. They lease their vehicles. I went to Enterprise, who's been doing this for a while, they lease law enforcement vehicles, and I gave them 10 vehicles. If we were to get 10 vehicles, how much would that cost you? And I gave them the figures of what we pay right now for 10 vehicles. Usually, it would cost us upfront $628,240 to get 10 new vehicles. That's fully equipped vehicles. But right now, through Enterprise, and I know you guys don't deal with this, but I'm giving it to you, because I want you to know, it would cost us $121,825 to get 10 new vehicles. That's a saving, initial cost of almost $500,000. Agencies are now going to leasing vehicles instead of purchasing vehicles. They're going to leasing vehicles because you hold the vehicle for, let's say, a maximum of five years, you get more on your return, that's more money back to the county to lease more vehicles. We hold our vehicles for eight, seven years, we get pennies on the dollar. We're not able to purchase new vehicles. So that is the presentation for the sheriff's office, and I'm ready for any questions. Oh, this is really light work.
I know, it's very quiet. No questions? Ms. Brodman.
I was just going to ask if you, if either our auditor or the budget office could provide sort of just a comparison of the costs, you know, maybe over like a 10- or 15-year period, comparing the, you know, purchase versus the leasing? Because what you're saying to me sounds intuitive, like that sounds like it would make more sense, especially given the shorter period of time that you keep the vehicle. You know, it's not like a personal car, which I will drive until it literally no longer runs, and I'm, you can't do that. You need to, you know, you need to have the reliability. But if that would be possible, I think that would be really helpful in us trying to, you know, trying to get your needs met.
Well, I tell you, what I wanted to do was, and I will do it, I'm just going to get a meeting with the county executive's personnel and of course, you guys, so you can understand a little bit more about it. But I would love for Enterprise to come in. You know, you've got to think about it. When you lease a car, you go get a car, it's a brand-new car. Why is it always a brand-new car? Because they've been in that business for a long time. They understand the value of driving it and then getting rid of it. Now, this is something that's pretty much past proven reliable. Wacomico County Sheriff Lewis, he's been doing this for a little while now, and he said, I love the program. They do everything for you. When you get the car from them, they'll put the light bars on it, they'll put the graphics on it, they do everything. And this includes a fully equipped car. I'm not talking about we have to put the radio in it. They put a, they give you a fully equipped car. And when a deputy or somebody has an accident with this vehicle, you know, if it's, you get another one very quickly, so.
Ms. Littbetter.
I was just following up on that. Maybe Wacomico County would be willing to share if they have some data over the money that it's saved them?
I think Sheriff Lewis would love to do that.
That might be beneficial to take a look at, to see what's, you know, what has his experience been with the numbers.
Any other questions or comments? Good work on that warrant clearing.
Oh, thank you. You know, we try our best, so I really appreciate everything that you've done for me.
And I'm going to be getting in touch with you in the next couple of months to work on some legislation around evictions and how we can make that process better.
You know, I've been busy with the eviction stuff.
I know you have, so we're going to work on that.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, is the detention department. Thank you guys for lasting, for waiting it out so long.
I also updated my presentation to reflect the afternoon as well.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and county council members. I'm Christopher Klein, Superintendent for Anaronda County Department of Detention Facilities. Before I introduce my team, actually, I'll probably do that first and then turn it to Bo, and then I think, like the chief said, he'll probably turn it back to me. So I'm honored to appear before you today in person to present So I'm honored to appear before you today in person to present our FY26 Operating Capital Budget for the Department of Detention Facilities. I'd first like to begin by introducing my executive staff who are here with me today. To my far left is Correctional Facility Administrator Michael Borjesa. In the middle is Correctional Facility Administrator John Kelson and immediately to my left is our Director of Business Services Kyle Lee.
Good afternoon, Bo Zhao from the Budget Office on the Department of Detention Facilities. Their proposed budget can be found on page three or four of the budget book. Turned over to the Superintendent for his presentation.
Thank you, Bo. Just a quick note, Kyle's fairly new to our team. She actually rejoined our team after the retirement of Pat Moore last year and I just want to say that she's been working very hard to get up to speed, understanding our budget and this process, and I really thank her for hitting the ground running. I also want to note that this will be the last time that Correctional Facility Administrator Michael Borjesa will be with us for this budget presentation, although he probably wasn't expecting it to be so long today. I just want to say he's going to be retiring in August. I know we still have a couple of months, but Michael started with the department in 1996. He's had a remarkable career and I do consider myself very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with him these past four years, so I want to thank him for his service to our department. I also personally want to take a brief moment and thank all of my staff for their continued hard work and dedication to the department. As many of you might know, we just celebrated National Correctional Officers and Employees Week last week, but I feel that we can never thank them enough for their contributions and sacrifices. So on behalf of all the staff of the Department of Detention, I'd first like to thank the County Council for your continued support of our department as we strive to fulfill our mission to provide for public safety through the confinement of pretrial detainees and convicted offenders in safe and secure facilities while monitoring alternatives to incarceration and preparing inmates for community reentry. In preparation for this year's budget, we focused on critical needs and submitted a budget that addresses these needs for our department as well as sustains the improvements and processes we have implemented. Our budget request focuses on the areas of maintaining safe operations, secure facilities, and providing essential offender programs and services. Before I get into the specifics of our budget request, I want to take a brief moment and share some significant challenges we have faced this year, some of which we are still facing. The first is key staffing changes. As I shared, we've recently had two turnovers in critical roles in our business management office. While these vacancies were only short, or only vacant for a short period of time, they happened during our budget preparation. It made it extremely difficult. Now that those positions have been filled and the new staff members are getting up to speed, I'm hopeful, and I'm sure Bo is as well, that our budget preparation next year will be a little bit smoother. Second, our inmate benefit fund. A recent ruling by the FCC was adopted on July 18th, 2024, that will significantly impact the structure of our existing contracts and the revenues we receive from site commissions. I want to be very clear that all site commissions we receive go directly back to programs and services that we provide our offender population, such as education, library, law library, and recreational equipment. While we are proposing alternative options to the contract as it stands now, we are likely to lose an estimated 700,000 dollars this upcoming year alone. The challenge of working on a solution might possibly cause us to have to put this contract out to bid, thus also impacting phone services, commissary services, inmate accounting, intelligence gathering, visitation, and tablet services. Third, MAT funding. The law requiring the state to fund MAT, which is medication assisted treatment, has been in place since 2019, yet the state has continually failed to fully fund our program. This puts an additional 500,000 to 1 million dollar burden on the county each year. While this year's proposed legislation to correct this deficiency failed, I'm hopeful that we will see successes next year. In the meantime, our department has been actively applying for grants and was very fortunate to already receive 111,000 dollars. Fourth, the Maryland Department of Health continues to break the law in relation to taking patients that have been court ordered for hospitalization under Section 3106. This violation significantly impacts operations and also ties up daily, ties to daily population overages that we are paying for as part of our medical contract. These violations cost the department and the county roughly 1.7 million dollars per year. The courts have held MDH in contempt on numerous cases and fines have been ordered, yet MDH has not paid one cent. While the thousands of dollars they owe us is significant, the constitutional violations of these individuals and their inability to receive court ordered treatment is inhumane. Please understand that my team will continue to work towards solutions on these issues that will be in the best interest of our county and the department. For FY26, I'd like to highlight two specific objectives. First, which we've heard conversation about today with public safety, is improving the vacancy rates for the department. The challenge of hiring staff for the department continues to be a top priority. Our department is coming off another successful year of hiring 54 detention officers, just outpacing the record 50 detention officers we hired the previous year. This was only possible through our collaboration with the Office of Personnel and the persistence of our staff. Currently, we have an 8% vacancy rate for our detention officers. This time last year, it was 9%. It is clear that we have the correct formula in place. While I know that fulfilling all of our vacancies is the ultimate goal, the work and effort by the team to get us to this point is a success that we should recognize and celebrate. Second is reestablishing our local reentry agreement with the Maryland Department of Corrections. This year, we have been successful in returning three individuals from the DOC to our local jails for reentry services. The team has been working on knocking down barriers for the past couple of years to make this a reality. To my knowledge, we are the only county in the state to have successfully returned any individuals to a local jurisdiction for this purpose. We're very hopeful that by achieving this milestone, we will start, start to see more movement on the DOC side. And I really do have to thank John Kelson and his team for continuing to push in those, those efforts in areas. This next slide captures some of our major accomplishments in FY25. I'll briefly cover a couple of these. First is the MCCS accreditation. Maryland Commission on Correctional Standards requires us to comply with around 75 standards and we're audited on those standards through the MCCS every three years. This past year, as in the past, Jennifer Road just received their compliance report, meeting 100% of all of those standards, and I believe Ordinance Road is scheduled for their hearing with the expectation that they will also receive 100%, 100% standard compliance with theirs in July. The next item I'd like to bring attention to is PREA accreditation. PREA is the Prison Rape Elimination Act. So this became a federal law in 2003, which also set up a series of standards with the intent on reducing sexual violence and rape inside correctional facilities. The accreditation process is not mandated, but yet this was something that our department felt that we should have to show our dedication to reducing sexual violence. I'm happy to report under Michael's leadership that we successfully achieved accreditation at both of our facilities last year. The third item I'd just like to highlight is our apprenticeship program. Since arriving here and looking at strategies to bring on more staff in the detention series, I partnered with Department of Labor and Workforce Development to create an apprenticeship program for our detention officers. After numerous challenges and a lot of workarounds to figure out how our model fit into the apprenticeship program, I'm happy to report that last year we also received the approval to be an apprenticeship program. Currently, to my knowledge, we're the only correctional apprenticeship program in the state of Maryland at this time. This next slide here represents our FY25 base budget and I won't go into the detail that Police did on this slide, but I'll just highlight that our base budget in FY25 was 69.6 million dollars and the recommended adjustments for FY26 that are the basis for our FY26 budget of 71 million point six, which is an increase roughly of 2.8%, not including capital requests. These next four slides here are breakdown of our budget by the separate budget unit locations. Here, this first slide is Jennifer Road Detention Center, which is our intake, pretrial, and maximum security facility. The breakdown is 38.46 million. Again, our increases are mainly attributed to increases in medical and food costs. This next slide, Ordinance Road Correctional Center, which has a majority of our sentence population and our weekender program as well as house arrest, has a budget of 22.27 million dollars. This facility focuses on programming as well as being the location for our reentry hub once it's completed. Our next slide for administration, the budget is 5.29 million. Here, we have some decreases in contractual and personnel services. Last for our facilities is our, our units is the Central Holding and Processing Center, which has a budget of 4.3 million. This unit continues to process over 6,000 intakes per year in an efficient manner that allows direct access to the commissioner as well as expedites the return of police officers back into the community. Moving on to our capital budget for FY26, this consists of three projects, again, most of which I believe this county is aware of. Our first project is for continued funding and the sum of 250,000 dollars for detention center renovations. Again, Jennifer Road was built in the 60s, which is in constant need of repairs to maintain a safe and secure facility. And then Ordinance Road, which I say is our newest facility, was built in 1998 and that time keeps creeping up on us, was actually 27 years, years old. As, as with any facility running 24/7, 365, you can understand the need for constant maintain, maintenance and repair. So this funding helps us continue with meeting those standards as well as meeting standards for accreditation. Our second project is the Central Holding and Processing Center parking lot, which I know I've been talking about for four years, since I've been here. I'm, I'm hoping that I eventually see this parking lot because it should be something. So this is for an additional 72,000 dollars in addition to the money that was already previously approved for the 50-plus parking spot, spots across from the Westonapolis Fire Station. I believe, I've been told that the project is at the 90% phase for construction and is expected to begin later this year, so my fingers are definitely crossed. Our third project is for the Ordinance Road Comprehensive Reentry Hub. There's an additional 45,000 that was identified as part of that project. And again, I, I've talked about that in, in previous meetings, but we believe that the direction of providing reentry services and resources to our population is an investment worth, uh, worth the county's time and effort for our returning citizens. Covering that, in closing, I just want to say thank you. I understand that this fiscal year has been tough for the county and I'm, I'm sure that there are some thoughtful decisions that need to be made by County Council as well and I respect that. I, I just want you to know that our hardworking, dedicated staff will continue to achieve our mission in protecting the community by providing humane treatment to the individuals in a secure environment. This budget, if supported, will allow us to continue to improve on the safety, morale, and effectiveness of our overall correctional system here in the committee, or here in the county. We remain committed, working together, providing for public safety, and we're prepared to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Mr. Smith.
Well, first, thank you all for roughing it out and staying here all day to get to this point. I know we, Ms. Klein haven't really sat down here recently, but I have Ordinance Road, obviously in my district, and I wanted to sit down with you to discuss potentially, I can recall how far back behind Ordinance Road is still county property, so I was curious about what that, that looked like. And the reason it came up is because I've had these meaningful conversations about returning citizens and recidivism and, you know, how often you see these folks, you know, coming back into your, your care. And I was going to send an email and life just keeps throwing balls at me. And so with some of these questions, but just giving you a heads up, you'll, you'll see email, email with some of these questions, but returning citizens was one of those conversations that kept coming up and yeah, wanted to have a conversation with you about.
Definitely look forward to your email. I, I don't know, immediately behind Ordinance Road, we have the ball field, the
Correct, correct.
Ball field, so there's not much space between our facility and it backs right up on that. I think there's a perimeter road that goes around it. We do have some space, I guess, to the, yeah, east, east side of the facility and, and I believe that in the original construction, that land was acquired to potentially, if the need was to expand the facility, that we had the model to build basically another spoke off of the main facility to create additional housing. Right now, we're not in that space, which is sort of why we, when we did the reutilization study, we looked at repurposing some of the vacant space that we had. I, I know maybe I've shared with other members, space utilization in a correctional environment has changed post-COVID, so sometimes when you think, oh, we have this spot and you have an outbreak of a contagious disease or something, being able to quarantine and separate and isolate works to your advantage. Generally, historically, correctional facilities have not had that space to be able to utilize for those purposes. But, you know, obviously through that repurpose study, we felt like investing more resources to that population that was returning to help them stop from potentially coming back was, was a good use of that space. With that though, the design is in mind that if we ever need to revert back to needing actual, you know, cells or dormitories or housing units, that that change back wouldn't be as arduous, you know, as having to build something brand new, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation, Superintendent Klein, and then Mr. Kelson, it sounds like you've done an outstanding job. The list of accomplishments that the department has is very impressive. You all, you know, don't get as much fanfare, but you're such an important part of this public safety house. We think about, you know, public safety in our communities and getting the bad guys off of the street, but you're the ones that are then tasked with working with those individuals in a humane way and providing for them in your facility, so thank you for the great work. And Mr. Borjesi, congratulations. Many years with the county, I hope you enjoy retirement.
Thank you, I appreciate the comment and we do recognize that a lot of our business is sort of behind the fences and walls and, you know, sometimes that's, does a disservice to us because it's hard to let people see what, what's actually going on. I think we're doing a better job of that, especially when we're trying to recruit and get people excited about coming into the field. But I do think that we're okay, you know, knowing if, if we're not in the news and we're not in the public eye, then, then we know that we're doing a good job. So, so, so we're okay with that sometimes too, but I, I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Ms. Rodgian.
Thank you. I actually was going to say something very similar to what Councilmember Fiedler said. I just, so, I mean, especially in a day where we're seeing so much inhumane treatment to people that are in custody, it's really refreshing to hear that you have such compassion and care and are, you know, just treating the, the people that are in your custody as human beings who each have a story and is, are individuals and, and want to get back to being productive members of the community and don't want to live their life as outcasts. So I, I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to just acknowledge you, your incredibly modest budget increase. I did a little math and it's under, if I'm getting the math right, it's under 3%.
2.8, yes.
So, uh, just, that's very impressive, so thank you for doing so much with, you know, even just a modest increase.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, just real quick comment, I was speaking with the county exec yesterday and I said, um, a lot of people don't realize, the people that are I said, a lot of people don't realize, the people that are returning are our community, right? And just, just because they're, they're housed with us for whatever period of time doesn't mean that we stop treating them like our community, and I think that's the approach that we have at our facility. So there, there are always things that we can work on. We know that the living conditions are different, but we're trying to balance a lot, you know, in those, in those facilities for everybody at one time, and, and that can be challenging. But I, I have an amazing staff, you know, tenured staff, new staff, that understand that we're not there to pass judgment, we're not there, you know, we're there to follow the, the orders of the court, but not to treat anybody differently than they should be treated, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to take a moment to ask, we've, this council has taken actions that support the recruitment of public safety officers in other respects. I'm just wondering if there are things that the county can be doing to improve your recruitment that have to do with budget? I see we're discontinuing some hiring bonuses and other things. Do you, with your, with your vacant positions and, and then attrition, do you, what, what can the county be doing? What do you think we could be doing to help recruit? I mean, are we having a, are there pay disparities between public safety agencies?
So, for one, one note, I don't think our, our bonuses are being discontinued, so we're, I, I believe our, our bonuses are in there. What's changed, though, is we're committing to the bonuses that we've already committed to, so the funding is there to support that. So our bonus structure was a tiered structure where at different benchmarks, you would receive certain payouts. So this, for this fiscal year, we've already committed to the money based on people that we've previously hired. So I, I think that money's there. The hiring, you know, the county has done, done really well, and I've pushed fairly hard, especially with our Office of Personnel, on what we can do to expedite hiring to be successful, and so we've changed a lot of processes. Some of that is, we've changed our medical process, we've changed our tuberculosis screening process, right? We used to have individuals that had to come back for multiple TB tests, or they had to come back to get the, the test read, and, you know, individuals traveling, that those things didn't work out, so we went to a blood draw, which was a little more expensive, but it benefited the candidate from, from an onboarding perspective. I started doing our own fingerprinting at the facility. We had a fingerprint machine, we were sending people to other locations to get fingerprints, and it's like, why are we doing this? You know, and there was a slight cost, but again, I'd rather invest on the front end if I know I could bring somebody in. So the county's been very flexible in, in my pushing to what I think is a good formula. We actually got to a point last year where we had more people in the phases of background process than we actually had positions available. Now, mathematically, we knew we probably weren't going to hire everyone, but we got close, so there was one point where we actually had to sort of create dual encumbered positions until I could promote some people to corporal to be able to balance that. So I think, I think it's, it's ever changing, you can't, you know, not one thing is going to always be the answer. You know, one of the things we did was we gave our conditional offer really early in the process, you know, to get people to know, I have a piece of paper in hand that says, if I continue down this path, I have a job. But then, as we started to have less and less jobs available, we sort of had to move the conditional offer, offer back, right? And we've, we actually talked this past couple of months about creating a waiting list because of how many applications we're getting. So, I, you know, I think I've been very well supported, but I can't say that, you know, next month or, you know, sometime next fiscal year, we might need to change and tweak, you know, what's going on, you know? You know, right now, I think detention has always been a difficult field to fill, detention and corrections. Like, we're, we're definitely last as the preferred public safety job. But, you know, sometimes that's driven by what, what's also going on, right? You know, the, the police department struggles because of what's going on in society, you know, the federal government is now in flux, and maybe people are looking for different opportunities that we might benefit from. So, you know, I, I think we're supported, but I, I, I don't know that I might not come back and ask that we need to change something down the road, but I feel that this county exec and his team will support what I need to fill. I, I am fully committed to, I would love to fill all of the vacancies, I don't know that that's possible, but we were, when I first got here, we had 60 detention officer vacancies. We were over 23% vacant in just detention officers. We are at 8%. We're not quitting, we're, we're tweaking and changing things and, and learning as we go along, but I'm fully committed, and I know that this county exec will support what I need to do to fill these positions.
May I follow? So, I'm just reading the budget analysis from the auditor, so I understand that previous offered bonuses, hiring bonuses are covered, but is that, is that a recruitment tool that is your, have access to moving forward for?
So, this-
Or that wasn't working, or that's not something we're doing anymore?
This latest posting, we do not have bonuses as part of that posting. That's correct. We've, the, the county funded our commitment to the people that we've already onboarded, so we have a new application that just went out, I think, last week, the 21st. So we are closely watching what those trends are based on the new climate and environment related to federal workers and, you know, the economy, and we're prepared to report back if we see that we need to change our strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, thank you for your decades of service with us, and we appreciate it. And to celebrate your retirement, we made you stay here all day long, and so your final budget presentation would be nice and long. I want to echo all my colleagues to saying, I'm so impressed with all y'all are doing for rehabilitation and, and really treating the, your, the, everyone as an individual and, and wanting them to be productive when they get back out, and that's just so important. And I can see from everything you've shared that that really is a focus for your team, and that remembering that they are part of our community, so thank you for that. You have a lot of challenges that are not of your making or our making, state, that the state needs to address, and I know that that's very complicated to have, and however we can be able to help with that, and, which may include that we, we all need to start advocating for you at the state level to make sure that this mandatory funding and thing, and medical care and things that are supposed to be happening actually does. So, but we appreciate you all. Thank you so much for coming out today.
Thank you.
And go home, have a good afternoon. We kept you all day. Oh, and so, is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the County Council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn?
No, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The County Council is adjourned until May 14, 2025, at 7:00 PM, when we will hold our first public hearing on the FY26 budget here in our chambers.